Also, success agency to the Westminster. We have an agency meeting right now, seven oh eight P M. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome. Mayor Ta.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
I'm here.
Councilmember Dell.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho.
I'm here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
I'm here.
May you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Next, we have salute to the flag will be councilmember Wayne. Invitation will be made hard, so please stand.
Stand and face the flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we ask that you will guide the heart and mind of all who exercise the responsible duty of civic leadership in Westminster to those who go into the city council, grant ability to listen carefully, reason thoughtfully, speak clearly, and to act with compassion. Give us a willingness to persevere in service for the coming good. May the effect of the work done here this evening promote the welfare of all the citizens in our community. Amen. Next, we have city attorney close section report.
Thank you, Mayor. There were four items on the closed session. There on the first three items, the council discussed and provided direction to staff, and there's nothing to report. On the fourth item, there was a potential initiation of litigation. The council voted on a motion made by councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo for in favor, zero against, and councilmember Ho was absent to proceed with the initiation of litigation. So I will the name of the actual defendant, and that will be released at a later time once services is made.
Thank you, city attorney. Next, we have expertise communication. I see none. So city clerk report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome everyone to our back to being in person and live. So on behalf of the mayor and the council, we welcome you, and we're super excited that everyone is here today. I'd also like to invite all the members of the community to please apply. We still have some current vacancies on our commissions and committees, so please refer to our website for that. And lastly, I'd like to introduce our emergency services coordinator, David Segura, who will be presenting COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Lucy. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, and community members. It is a pleasure to be here tonight to provide you the COVID update and current trends. And the mere fact that we are here in person is a sign that COVID-19 numbers are still trending in the lower lower section of the the number. So that's a good thing. However, this is no time to drop our guard. As predicted, the highly transmissible Omicron variant known as BA two has become the dominant variant among the new U.S. cases. As of this weekend, the United States was averaging more than 31,000 cases a day, an increase of 3% over the past two weeks. One thing to keep in mind, while there has been an uptick in COVID cases, the current numbers are just a fraction of the height of during the height of the Omicron surge, the winter surge. Therefore, there is no need for alarm. According to the S D C, the community level in California and Orange County remains low. As a matter of fact, the CDC is reporting that much of the United States is at a low community level. Is that as I have reported before, this is determined by looking at hospital beds being used, hospital admissions, and the total number of new COVID cases in the area or in an area. Though BA two is rising in the U.S., leading public health officials are not expecting another dramatic surge in new cases, largely due to the amount of immunity within the population. Globally, BA two is declining in Europe, and it appears that other countries around the world may also avoid a surge due to previous high levels of infection from Omicron. As the COVID numbers drop, mandates continue to change. For the benefit of our residents and our business community, I will highlight some of the current state guidelines and mask mandates. Just recently, effective April 1st of this year, the requirement for vaccine verification or proof of negative test for attendees at indoor mega events was lifted and moved to strong recommendation. While most masking requirements have been lifted and are now highly recommended, the California Department of Public Health is maintaining masking requirements in specified high-risk settings consistent with CDC recommendations. This allows us to continue protecting our most vulnerable populations and the workforce that delivers critical services to the at these settings. Masks are still required for all individuals in the following indoor settings, regardless of vaccine status. These settings are on public transit and in transportation hubs, emergency shelters, as well as cooling and heating centers, healthcare settings, state and local correctional facilities and detention centers, homeless shelters, and long-term care settings and adult and senior care facilities. In addition to these requirements, it is up to the individual to evaluate their own personal risk and determine how to best protect themselves and their families from COVID-19. We know that some people in communities, such as our oldest residents, people who are immune compromised, and people with disabilities are at higher risk for serious illness and should take precautions. According to healthcare experts, wearing masks, getting vaccinated will further improve protection for COVID-19. As a reminder, vaccines are free for everyone, and the healthcare experts believe that vaccines are the safest way to protect against the most serious outcomes from COVID-19, including severe illness, hospitalization, death, and long COVID. These requirements and recommendations will continue to be updated as the state public health department continues to assess conditions on an ongoing basis. Internally, we haven't had any new COVID cases within our city workforce since my last report. This is the end of my report, and I'm available for questions.
Really appreciate your detailed reports. So any any question or concerns from members of the city council? Okay, so thank you so much for your update. Really appreciate that. So next, we have city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. First off, welcome back to everybody for our first in-person regular meeting in over two years. That is quite an achievement. Getting through this pandemic definitely shows a lot of resiliency in this community, so I'm excited to see everyone's faces after this, you know, this long two years. That being said, I have a lot to report tonight. We have some exciting things going on. Well, first of all, we have I'd like to address a couple of rumors that are circulating regarding the Westminster Mall project. There have been some questions regarding some plans that have been floating around as far as what the mall project looks like. As of right now, there are no approved plans for the Westminster Mall. Staff is still working with the mall owners in regards to the project. So anything that you see online right now is not not accurate. So once we are at a better place, we will provide an update to the community and the city council as to what what developments are happening with that particular project. In addition, we have a Public Works Open House coming up on Wednesday, May 18th, from three to seven P M. It is a free event. It is the first time that we are actually doing an annual open house for the Public Works yard. That's exciting. It's going to be it. We're going to have a couple of events that are happening within that event itself. So we'll have e-waste, e-waste collection, paper shredding, and used oil collection as well. There will be food, demonstrations, music, and just a lot of fun, and you'll get to see what our what services our yard provides. We also have coming up quite a few events. The Bunny Hop Event, which is a pop-up bunny event where you can come do activities, take photos with the Easter bunny, get to know some of our local community groups that will be popping up with their community booths at the event. That's happening this Saturday, April 16th, from 10:00 to 12:00 at Gillespie Park, and then 1:30 to 3:30 at Westminster Park. We had our first day this last Saturday over at Sigler and at Bolsa Chica, and it was well-attended, definitely a lot of fun, and it was great to see everyone come out and enjoy our our parks. We also have a blood drive coming up this Tuesday, April 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. over here at the Community Services Building. So if you get a chance to go on the Red Cross website, make sure to to donate if you can. There is a blood shortage right now, specifically platelets. On Tuesday, April 21st, at 4:00 p.m., the Family Resource Center is going to be hosting a family gardening event, and that is in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month, which is this month. The Senior Center Earth Day event is taking place on Thursday, April 21st, from 9:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. for refreshments, information, and tips to reduce reuse and recycle. Our senior events are always a lot of fun. So if you're if you're a senior or you know of a senior who's interested in in being part of our senior activities, give our Community Services Department a call. And speaking of Community Services Department, we have a couple of new staff members we'd like to welcome. Rosemary Otiniano, which she is our special services clerk who's going to be assisting customers at the at the community center's front desk. And then we also have Kaylani Menadir, who is a recreation leader. She'll be working in our after-school programs. And the biggest news for Community Services is after a long, extensive recruitment process, I am proud to announce that Vanessa Johnson, who is currently our she's our supervisor, but she's our acting Community Services Director, has been promoted to permanent Community Services Director. So. She's been with the city for over 20 years in various in various roles, and she brings a lot of energy, knowledge, and vision to the city. So I'm excited to have her in this capacity permanently. Other than that, we also have a Black April event that's coming up on Saturday, April 30th. We've had one official City Black April event, and unfortunately, with COVID, we had to go virtual last year. We'll come back with time and details at a later at a later date, but that will be exciting, and it'll be over at the Sid Goldstein Freedom Park. And then, last but not least, our Police Department this past weekend represented the city and competed in the Baker to Vegas running event. I know some folks may have heard that Baker to Vegas in the past, but what it really is, is it's a relay race. It starts in Baker, California, and it continues through the desert to Las Vegas with no breaks. There are 20 stages to the race. Each team has 20 runners and support staff from their departments. Over 8,000 law enforcement professionals participate in this race. Our police team ran through the elements, which included close to 100-degree weather, and they finished the race in 20 hours and 45 minutes. So the time didn't qualify, you know, the team for a for for an award, but the officers, they did their best in these grueling conditions and, you know, in a positive can-do attitude, and we are so proud of them. So we have a photo of the the team that we to show that photo up one more time. This is our team includes our chief. Just on a side note, I think I think our chief is the only Orange County chief who actually ran in the race. So kudos to him. And also, I have a couple of our team members here. If you can just wave and.
I'd like to put out.
Absolutely.
I would like to point out our team captain.
Absolutely. Come on, come on up.
Although he passed out the night, the day later, he did a great job, and I have pictures, and he did a great job, and I just want to commend him. And I know that the city and the city council is proud of him and all the work he did representing us and in the middle of the desert. And I know we're crazy for doing it, but he did a great job.
Want a couple of words to? Have a couple of words to want to acknowledge your team and want to have a couple of words to acknowledge your team and.
Definitely. Like I said, the grueling conditions out there was over 100. Chief here had one of the most grueling legs of the mall, and he didn't stop at all. He showed heart, and he competed with the best of them. So thank you to chief. Thank you to everyone's support. Thank you to our runners and support personnel. Everyone left it all out there, and that's all I could ask for as a captain. And and that's all that matters. If you leave it all out there and run with heart. So thank you guys so much for your support. It is much appreciated, and it means a lot. Thank you.
Being said, that is all for my report tonight. Thank you.
Well, really, one of the things I would say to manager for really detailed report, but that's a really good report. So like to welcome everyone back in the in-person meeting. You couldn't believe it. It's been like more than two years. Okay, so the next item we have is a special presentation. We have proclamation for Fair Housing Month. So may I invite Christina Prado, outreach coordinator from the Fair Housing Foundation? Do we have? All right. So please come up, and I'd like to invite all members of the council to join me to give proclamation. All right, okay. Proclamation Fair Housing Month, April 2022. Whereas the Westminster Mayor City Council joined the Fair Housing Foundation in celebrating April as Fair Housing Month in promoting fair housing law to promote and secure equal and fair access to housing opportunities. And whereas one of the richest freedoms enjoyed by Americans is the freedom to live in a home of one choice. And whereas this promise made to us by Nation Fair Housing Law, which require all the people be treated equally in connection with sale or rental of housing, regardless of race, color, national origin, sex, gender identity, disability, sexual orientation, marital status, age, familial status, or religion. And whereas this year marked the 54th anniversary of Federal Fair Housing Act, the original legislation targeting the elimination of housing discrimination in America. And whereas since the adoption of the Fair Housing Regulation in April 1968, April has been designated Fair Housing Month. Each year, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and Fair Housing Foundation organize events and activities during this month to focus attention on the issue of equal opportunity in housing. And whereas April is a fair housing month throughout the nation, we're asking each resident of the city Westminster to support effort to put into practice the principles of freedom, justice, and equality upon with this recognition was founded. Now, therefore, I treat her, Mayor City Westminster, on behalf of Vice Mayor Carlos Manzo and Councilmember Tydo Kimberly-Ho and Chi Charlie Wayne do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Westminster, urging our citizens to recognize this celebration throughout this month. Congratulations.
I just wanted to thank the city of Westminster for acknowledging April as Fair Housing Month, and happy Fair Housing Month to everyone. We will be hosting a virtual event April 25th, and you can find that through our website at the Fair Housing Foundation. So you all are more than welcome to join us. It is going to be a virtual event, so we hope to see you all there. Thank you so much.
All right. And next, we have auto communications.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the agenda or non-agenda items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction, except public hearing items. Members of the public wishing to address the public hearing items should do so at the time of the public hearing, unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the city council. Count comments shall be limited to five minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. So you still have time to do that. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium. And the time at that time, state your name, city of residence for the record, and the five-minute timer will begin. Any person wishing to address the city council via Zoom should press the raise your hand button. If you are using a telephone and have dialed in, please press star nine to raise your hand when your name is called. I will enable the microphone, and we'll address you to begin after you have, and then you can unmute your button. If you're calling from a telephone or cellphone, you could press star six on your dial pad to mute and unmute. And at that time, you may state your name, city of residence for the record, and the timer will begin.
Now like to open all the communication.
We did have one person submitting to speak in advance, and that is Tony Bowie. If you are here, if you could please step forward. Please come forward.
Just come in right on time. I'm at home on Zoom, and I saw all of you over here. So I felt that I have to be here to address to all of you in person. That is better than through Zoom. You don't know who's speaking and why he's speaking. So I just come in three minutes ago. And good evening, all of you residents of Westminster who concerned about the growth of this city. And for the past years, our city has been delay in growing, partly because of COVID-19 and partly because all of the city members, city council members, busy fighting with each other on different issues. And that is very bad for our city in growing to for thriving for the benefit of our residents. So today, I bring my concern that you have to get together to help the city. I know that Ms. Kimberly Ho, I used to help her to be the one of council in planning commissioner. And then I finished my part. And now I know that he's she's going to run for assembly with the motto clean up Sacramento. Kimberly, I don't know how you clean up Sacramento with your promising, but I hope you can have a room to clean it up better. And I'm willing to give you a room if you can do it. And the other thing is that you used to promise that you will connect this new land service of visitor to Westminster. But I've been waiting too long and didn't see any plan growing up yet. I hope you don't forget your promise to the city. Don't with stay with your promise and working on it rather than empty promises. That is what I want to give to you. And city council. Tydo, you used to call this city a city of Ho Chi Minh City. I thought I hope that you will go out and apologize to all the people. That is very bad for City of Westminster because we have a lot of Vietnamese people who scare to hear about Ho Chi Minh City. And you call them City of Westminster, the Ho Chi Minh City. It's not bad, bad, bad. It should be put in your record. That means you do a bad reputation for this city. And thirdly, I heard that our city is going to be in bankruptcy soon because we do spend a lot of monies for different things. So I hope you all concentrate on main issue to the City of Westminster to help all people, especially the business people. There's some people, they put in business application and then city and planning, drawing, but take a long time for them to get approval to run a business. So please, please, please help the business people to operate for the benefit of their own business and also for a whole city of Westminster. And my last wish is that all of you getting together to work together as a team rather than a gang of three and a group of two and then fighting with each other. You try to abuse the majority votes. You gang together like three group, three people to beat the other two people. That's the bad. You are not, you should not working in the group like that. This is the city of Westminster resident, not of your own agenda for your political career or for all of your benefit, your own ego mine. Thank you very much. Oh, thank you, Christine Gordon, and thank you all of you.
The next speaker in person is Joe Dominguez. If you can please come up.
Thank you. I am here this evening to speak about the council's inaction to address the worsening financial position of our city. On March 14th, the council and the public were given a report on the financial condition of the city and the impacts of losing our 1% sales tax measure that sunsets in 2022, a tax measure that had a six-year sunset put on the measure at the insistence of Ta. All our council members have had anywhere from four to six years seated on the council to address the financial issues of this city, with the exception of Monzo. Yet here we are, facing the final deadline again this August with no action. We have neither received a solid alternative plan nor a vote to place the measure on the ballot to allow our citizens to decide the future of our city. Our council has spent more time on self-serving issues, such as where their office is located, where a monument is located, than actually developing a plan to save our city from demise, which is ironic, as neither of these will be in existence without our city being solvent. As I drive by the signs, asking me to vote for Ho for State Assembly, her tagline to clean up Sacramento. I ponder if the continuation of that tagline should read, because I left a pile of rubble in the wake of the only city in which I have held public office. Our Ta's poster, asking me to vote for him for State Assembly, ironically, right at the six-year mark for the sunset of the tax measure that he insisted on having to even allow the measure on the ballot in 2016. Does that serve his future? Better to leave our city in ruin? Does that serve his future? Better to leave our city in ruin with no plan? So he can say on his tagline, I never raised taxes. I know what boxes not to mark on my ballot. But all this leads us to the issue of the behavior of this council, four of which have remained silent on whether they will put this measure on the ballot. No action, no words. Monzo stated on March 14th, he would support putting the measure on the ballot. Essentially, citizens, we have a council that is practicing the facto suppression of the vote. Action we are appalled at in the communist countries and yet clearly this council finds acceptable. We deserve better. These are elected officials impacting the quality of life and local control in the city that has grown into a vibrant center of cultural diversity with a world-renowned tourist and shopping area known as Little Saigon. I was born in this city. I bought my first home in this city. And up until this year, I had planned on retiring in this city in that home. Like many of you, my husband and I have made our largest life investment in the city of Westminster. We have a home which cannot be said of all council members who will simply go back to their city in which they own a home with no negative impact on their retirement or loss of their city. My husband and I have actively engaged on all levels with our local police, city code enforcement graffiti removal, trash hauling, city events, and we've even consulted with our water department to conserve water. All people we consider part of our community that make Westminster a great choice to call home. This will all be lost to the oligarchy actions of this council. We will lose local control. No police department, no homeless liaison, no council to address when we need change. No voice in the improvements we want for the tourist market in Little Saigon. This will be gone. I speak to the citizens to be heard now. Have your voice heard. Exercise your freedom to be heard. Save your city from becoming bankrupt. Act because you want to preserve your quality of life in the community. Because you want to remain in a city that has its own police force with members that know us by name when we answer and we need help. Because you want to keep our after-school programs, because you want to keep our senior center and you want to maintain our parks. Don't be silenced by these indifferent elected officials.
The next member of the public is Jessica Lostanelle.
It's really nice to see you. I just want to say that before I speak. I really enjoy seeing all of you here. All right, so I listened to podcasts on my way to work in the morning and I learned a new word today. I learned rumble strip, and this is the part of the highway that alerts inattentive drivers that they're dangerously close to the edge. And it's a tool to prevent imminent danger. I thought of Westminster when I heard that word because this city is alarmingly close to financial danger. And we're trying to alert you, the decision-makers on the dais, that this city needs to correct its course. In light of that, I have been forced to reevaluate my opinions regarding retail marijuana sales in Westminster. I'm not a proponent of recreational marijuana use, but it's time for me to face facts. Any one of legal age can go to surrounding cities to purchase their marijuana and those cities benefit from the taxes involved in that sale. As we're now driving on that metaphorical rumble strip, it's time for Westminster to actively pursue bringing retail marijuana sales to our city. Likewise, two years ago, I was not a champion for short-term rentals and I was understanding to the concerns of residents regarding these types of rentals in residential areas. But then again, we're driving on that rumble strip. We can't afford the luxury of passing up this source of income. Short-term rentals could generate revenue from occupancy taxes and fees. Therefore, tonight, I'm asking you to seriously consider or reconsider these potential sources of income for our city. Residents need the opportunity to save our city. We elected this council to steer us in the right direction. So it's time to get off the rumble strip and get back on the right track. Thank you very much.
The next person is Steph Shai. I'm sorry, Said Shaw. I'm so sorry.
Hello, everybody. My name is Said Shaw. Some of you guys know me from the past. I am the owner of Best Western Westminster Inn. I was a past professor in the School of Business. And I also was the president of the chamber for three years. I quit after three years because my golf game was being hurt. I really come out there to say thank you to the council and the city because a lot of exposures have taken place. It's been tough to see, but really it was good for the city and I appreciate you guys doing it. I really want to thank the police because in this tough environment of cuts and deficits, they have really shined through. So thank you, police, for all your effort. And really the city staff also, you know, in the shortage. So we were concerned about the money being diverted, but now I will fully support the extension of the 1% tax. I'll talk about it a little bit later. What do we have? August 12th to put it on the ballot. Signatures, bring it on. I will sign it. I'll even get you some help if the city council won't go for it. I'm here to talk also about the short-term rentals. From a business standpoint, a city like Westminster will not benefit. Anybody who says that, I will show them the numbers. I'll tell you what the other cities are doing, like for instance, Costa Mesa had given approval. It was really very tough for them. And after two years, hearing all the noise and the crimes and the parties and the drugs, they finally voted unanimously to ban it. They, you know, our hotels provide a buffer. If someone comes in, we got cameras, we got safety measures. We really support the police from doing some of the bad people coming in. And if you see what has happened to Irvine, Irvine also gave a go-ahead. And they were the safest city considered in the United States. They were no more. So in November of last year, they banned it too. It's going to go into effect, I think, next month. And I can tell you the same thing about Garden Grove and they got so tired of it, they are imposing a six-months penalty for all the parties and stuff for any violation. I can keep on going with other cities like Anaheim and stuff. There's no evidence that that brings in extra money. If you were a resort city, maybe, but not here. It brings in more problems than it causes. I think the ballot was, this issue was brought up by Mr. Taido. And we don't know why. Everybody, there's some rumors going around, you know, there's like two people running for Assembly District 70, Chita and Kimberly Ho. We wish him the best. But we also know that council members, those one of his best friends he had lunch with, Ted Bowie is also now running. And there's concerns and rumors that it's going to cause more problems in the city disruptions and the votes are going to be divided for the current residents or the current members who are running and it may get diverted to someone else. So I would like him to address why he is bringing it up, what evidence he has. And I respect him, by the way. He is a very ethical guy. I truly think he's very good for the city. He's brought up some things that has been very good for us. I thank you for that. But I think these things, you need to kind of bring it up. Why? And if you've had lunches and any discussions with Janet and Bowie on this thing, I know we have lunch. I've seen you. Other people have too. So in all, I want to just thank everybody on that and express my concern on how the safety of the city is going to go downhill very fast if you ever consider this. In all, I think now the measure SS that is expired must go through. As a professor, I looked at different alternatives and it's too difficult these days of anything in the short term. So I don't know if the council is going to four out of five or get the signature. Who's going to get it started? But I can tell you, if someone gets it started, I will be in there helping out. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeff Trong. If you could please come up.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jeff Trong. I'm the owner and operator of the Westminster Quality Inn next to Home Depot and Westminster Boulevard. I'm here to not support or oppose the short-term rental. Last year or a year before, I remember calling in via Zoom meeting. Back then, the city proposed the ordinance banning the shorter rentals. And the City Council voted in favor and passed the resolution. We don't know why this year the issue came back and right now City Council is suggesting to bring to the reverse the ruling, the vote within one year. Back then, we banned the, we passed the law to ban the short-term rental because we didn't think that it will bring benefit to the city, but rather it will bring more crime, illegal gambling. There were cases where the people will come in, rent a house for a couple of weeks and turn that house into a gambling place. They bring in gambling machine and with prostitution. And what happened is they have private securities on those houses. So the neighbor around, they were afraid because the thugs in the neighborhood. And we certainly don't want that to happen. And besides, right now, the city has no way to control the Airbnb. And not just the Airbnb promise of bringing the transient tax dollar to the city. They are private group that can run a personal app. You know, you and me, anybody can set up a personal group and start renting these house out and bringing the empty home, the vacant home and running our own Airbnb. And how would the city control that? Is the city prepared to control that? Is the police department prepared to deal with those kind of problem that will caused by this passing the Airbnb short-term rental? So we, as the hotel operator, we strongly oppose the reversal of the ordinance that we passed last year because it is, well, negatively affect the quality of life as the previous speaker brought up. Actually, it will bring more crime to the city, which we're not ready to deal with. And as the hotel operator, it also negatively affect our income. And also the tax, the transient tax dollar that we bring to the city contribute to the city tax dollar issues. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jay Bhakta.
Good evening, City Council. Thanks for the time. My name is Jay Bhakta. I'm the operator of the Hotel 39 on Beach and 405 Freeway. And with this short-term rental that you're trying to bring, it'll bring very minor revenue, but it'll be a drain on city services and also bring in illegal activities thereby draining city services. I commend City of Westminster PD whenever we have had the need to call despite budget cuts. They have come through and helped us whenever we need to, chief. Thank you very much. But this is something that will really drain city services at the time when we need to save money on city services. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Roger Mendrum. Please step forward.
Hello. Good evening. Nice to see all you happy shiny people here live and in person. It's been a while. I can't really believe it's been two years. Couple of things on the agenda that I just want to say I'm thankful for. You all heard me up here a number of times asking for McFadden to be repaired and repaved. So that's finally done. I really appreciate that. Especially the area in front of La Quinta High School. So that's a big improvement. Although somebody within a week of getting that repaved spilled a huge amount of like Aqua Color paint in one area. So I don't know if that just needs to be worn out after time or put some paint on it or run a little slurry on there, but or just leave it there as a, as a mark of whatever. But so a couple of things, well, you know, thankful of the community events that are new and the Easter events. I can see that those are going to be really big. You gotta, you know, if we can start getting, getting people out and enjoying our parks the way they're supposed to be, that's a really good thing. I didn't really expect to be talking too much about this the short-term rentals. And I just want to give you all a, just a little something to think about if you're considering this. Because at this point on the agenda, you're hearing things and you're going to consider things. Specifically recall the last meeting that was brought up and there was a representative from Airbnb here. I thought the guy had some great plans to specifically contractually give the city money based on portion of those rentals. I can also speak personally of an Airbnb right next to my mother's house in Anaheim. One of the things that you should consider, even after hearing these gentlemen speak, is I believe that every city is different. Huntington Beach downtown area nightmare for Airbnbs. Westminster, you got to realize who those visitors are going to be or what are they going to be doing? Are they, are they here for the beach, the surrounding areas? Comparing prices to the Anaheim area for Disneyland? Or are they here for Little Saigon? It's a clientele that you don't need to be afraid of. So speaking of the Airbnb that was placed by my, next door to my mother's house, I was concerned because my mother had just had a stroke. She's now 81 years old. I spent every weekend at her house for three years, two, two and a half years, every weekend. And it really wasn't that bad. And this is a big house. The pool, resort-style pool in the backyard. It really wasn't that big a deal. So you got to consider the clientele that was going to be at these Airbnbs. And for Westminster, I really don't think it's going to be an issue as far as what these gentleman's concerns are going to be. So and then regarding the cannabis retail facility, just, you know, back up. Open your eyes, open your everything and just really consider everything and please don't be, you know, closed-minded about that. Really think about, obviously, the police department is going to probably have the biggest issue on, on that as far as, you know, keeping the crime down and things like that. One other thing, kind of a pop quiz from the last meeting. I thought it was interesting that quite a number of people spoke about the same kind of common denominator that I really wish there might be a sign on the other side of the door before you all come in here. And the common denominator, obviously, last meeting was your egos. Just check your ego at the door before you come in here. And think more about working together. But that also, I understand revolves around the propaganda that happens in the streets and you know who you are that are involved in that. And then based, then back to the subject of the city's financial situations, I want to challenge all of you. I know it's not on the agenda, but I want to challenge all of you on the end of the meeting comments that you have the time for your comments. Just tell us why that you're so reluctant on even giving the residents a chance to vote for that. You don't have to like it. You don't have to vote for it, but explain in real terms as a resident, as a city council and mayor. as a resident, as a city council and mayor, explain to us in real terms why you're so against it, if you are against it. Just have a conversation with us. Thank you. Have a good evening.
The next speaker is Lock Don.
My name is Lock Don. I'm a resident of City of Westminster. I currently residing at eighty-four oh-two Sanwood Circle, Westminster, California, eight-two-six-eight-three. Okay, well regarding the short-term rental, all the gentleman already addressed, so that left me with only one question. What are the benefits of reversing short-term rentals? That is only one question that I have, besides all of the issues and everything that they already addressed. Thank you.
Sir Terry Rains, please come up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Terry Rains, Westminster. It feels great to finally be back before you again in person. Regardless of item three point six, hybrid meetings should continue going forward. I had the pleasure of going on a patrol ride-along recently with our great PD and another one coming up soon with our HLOs. Thank you, Westminster PD, and I'm glad you all survived the desert run. Why are CityNet reports only being presented quarterly instead of monthly, item three point eight? In twenty-twenty-one, monthly contacts averaged sixty street exits, six. This year contacts just forty-three, street exits just two. But we certainly don't have fewer unhoused people on our streets. So what's up, CityNet? Every year I ask why the city profile data in the CAFR, now ACFR, is not accurate, item three point nine. It just keeps getting copied over from prior years and never gets fixed. One, the city is not located in the northeast corner of Orange County. It is in the central northwest area. Two, the city is not ten point six square miles. It is ten. Three, the population is not ninety-two-six-ten. It's ninety-one-oh-eighty-three. Or the transparency portal doesn't even have the adopted fiscal year twenty-one-twenty-three budget. Five, the new businesses listed have all been in the city three to four years now. Six, it still cites the state's dissolution of redevelopment, missing the word agencies, by the way, as the city's key budget challenge, but that happened ten years ago. Seven, it says the city recently purchased and resold previously owned redevelopment land to establish an economic development fund, also several years ago. Eight, it says the city is the fifth largest collector of local general property tax. That should be lowest, not largest. Nine, the interim city clerk is not the communications director as listed. Ten, if the city received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for fiscal year twenty-one, why is only the fiscal year twenty-one included? Eleven, page eight of the management discussion has a material typo. Two-hundred-and-seventeen-point-two million in capital asset investment should be two-hundred-and-twelve-point-seven million. And all of that just in a few pages. Phew. Oh, and whatever happened to the twenty-one RFP for audit services? Item five point one, the district boundary maps were not in the staff report, making it difficult to visualize the referenced areas. The priority should be to complete the specific plan for the Westminster Mall site. We're several years into it with nothing to show for it except rumors and speculation. I signed up for email updates long ago, but have never received just one email. Yes, there are many different property owners in Little Saigon, but it would benefit the community to have a specific plan for that entire district to ensure consistent development standards going forward. I look forward to the Shrine Group's presentation about retail cannabis, item five point two. Their retail brand Stussy seems focused more on vape pods than traditional cannabis products. Illegally licensed dispensary would generate a lot of revenue for the city. Santa Ana just paid for a eight-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand upgrade dollar upgrade to their library with cannabis tax revenue. Our residents are purchasing medical and recreational cannabis products in other cities or having them delivered to their homes here in Westminster from nearby delivery-only shops. Other cities are pulling in that tax revenue, not us. Some residents continue to purchase cannabis products from illicit sources. Studies show crime rates are either unaffected or actually decreased in cities with licensed dispensaries. So council, please keep an open mind on this. Ordinance twenty-five-sixty-six banning short-term rentals shown in item five point three staff report still has the same typo I pointed out two years ago. On page four, the words facilities should be facilitates. Worse, that same errors in the municipal code. Councilman Doe and the public requested the item to ban STRs be tabled in twenty-twenty until staff could do more research, but council ignored the request. So council, let's get it right this time. Direct staff to research the topic extensively. Bring back a comprehensive report with information from nearby cities, revenue forecast, transient occupancy tax rates, crime stats tied directly to STRs, code enforcement activity on STRs operating illegally in our city and what regulations the city can impose. This is an opportunity to grow revenue, but only if it's done right. I will end my comments tonight with the single most important issue facing our city. Our being completely ignored by this council. If you think by ignoring us, we're gonna go away, you are sadly mistaken. Residents are outraged by this council's apparent mission to suppress our right to vote on extending the tax measure because four of you are too chicken S-H-I-T to put it on the ballot. Your audacity, throw it back on the residents or the POA to get initiative signatures is BS. City employees fear for their jobs and futures, including our beloved police officers. Four of you seem hell-bent on sinking this ship and you don't give a S-H-I-T about Westminster. Our police department will be gutted, our parks closed, our senior center and youth programs eliminated, and our streets will be in total disrepair. Mayor Ta, we are in this mess because you insisted on a sunset date back in twenty-sixteen so that you would vote for it. If you four are so worried about your GOP endorsements and support, I can assure you, things are gonna be much worse for you politically if you refuse to put this on the ballot. You can bank on that.
The next speaker is Deborah Mariscal. Please step forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, citizens of Westminster, those that are on Zoom. Good evening. So nice to see everybody. I'm so happy to see happy faces. I have to work early tomorrow, like at six o'clock, so I'm not gonna stay hours of the night if you guys decide to go on until one o'clock in the morning. So if I'm gone by nine, you'll know why. So just a few things. Councilmember Doe. Westminster police officers, thank you for your service. If I, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you yet, but I'm ready for my second ride-along. It's been a little over two years since I went on my first one. I'm ready for the second one. Next thing I'd like to bring up is why don't we have a full-time, regular city council, city manager instead of an intern? Do we, is there some reason that that hasn't happened? She has done an absolutely fabulous job and she deserves to be appointed as our regular full-time city manager. Now regarding the short-term rentals, we did have a number of years ago, a few new homes that were built on Jackson. And we had quite a few parties that happened there where we had a lot of disruptions to the neighborhood. The police were called on a regular basis. And so I think we really need to look carefully if that's something that we decide that, that you want to go through. Jill and I, we had to deal with that and said, because we live in that area, it's not something that we would personally condone because it's hard to control who is renting an Airbnb, right? Unless you do a, are you gonna do a background check on every person that wants to rent your property? I don't think so. My least favorite topic is the monument. We've spent way too much time. We spent countless hours and salaries of our city employees in dealing with this. If you want to do a monument, great. Put it on private property. Does not belong on city property. My idea is make little ones. You can sell them on eBay. We could get money from that, that you could put them on your fireplace, your dining room table, you know, whatever. But that is something that if we had spent as much time on the financial issues for our city as we have on the monument, we hopefully would have some progress by now. I'm in favor of allowing the residents to vote on where their tax dollars come from. We put that SS in place a number of years ago. It was voted on. Citizens wanted it. I don't want to lose our police department. I don't want to lose our city manager. I don't want to lose these guys. I don't want to lose animal control. I don't want to lose community services. I don't want to you, to lose things that help seniors here. Is that gonna happen? I don't know. I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a prophetess. But I do know that when money's not there, things go, things go away. What are we gonna do with the police building? Are we gonna turn it over to the Orange County Sheriff after we spent a gazillion dollars in building that thing? I mean, I remember the old police department, little small thing, you know? What are we gonna do with that? So leave it up to the, leave it up to the voters to do that. And Kimberly, I know that you said that you could come up with some great ideas when you're under pressure. Where, where are those ideas? You know, we're at the eleventh hour, you know, we're, I don't remember what the, Jessica, I don't remember what her word was, but we're, you know, we're on the brink and, I don't want to, I don't want to see us be like that. Now I'm gonna try to be as respectful as I possibly can in my finishing comment. I'm quoting somebody who no longer lives in the city and I'm, I'm gonna paraphrase what she said. For some of the council who seem to want to control this city and the citizens that in it, are in it, why are you so hell-bent on trying to destroy this city?
Next speaker is Ak Pham.
Evening, City Council. Nice to see everybody here instead of Zoom. And I'm here today to speak again Airbnb in the city of Westminster. The reason is if you allow Airbnb, you have unknown traveler leave next door to you and you don't know who it is. The hotel is a buffer for it. So don't allow Airbnb. And let me tell you, Airbnb, there's no rule. They're not gonna pay tax to the city. I know that. I have a couple of friends do Airbnb. They never report any tax. And the city will lose tax on the hotel. We pay eight percent TOT tax. The reason that Anaheim Garden Grove doing good because those city tax. And I hope Westminster not gonna lose this TOT tax. And the people live at Airbnb. When they open the party, they sell legal illegal drug and turn it into casino. They got the train, the police department, the police will have a lot of trouble. So tonight, I urge you not to vote for Airbnb. Thank you.
Next person is Kai Dao. Please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kai Dao from Youth Media. Welcome back, everyone. Well, I see a lot of new faces and I heard there's new personnel. So again, congratulations to interim city manager, Mr. Important, Chief of Police Darren Landy and Vice Mayor Carlos Manzo and everyone else. I'm sorry, I cannot. Well, I hope from here forth, we'll see a different city council and that will behave accordingly and bring about professional and productive meetings and decisions that we all expect of. And the last time I was speaking, I said I was ashamed to be a Vietnamese-American residing in Westminster. I'd like to apologize to the city, all the citizens and our neighboring cities residents as well. I'm ashamed, not because of my heritage, not because I'm Vietnamese, just like the Russian people are ashamed of Putin. I'm ashamed because of what we did collectively as a community, electing Tripa as our mayor, representing our city and community. Now, I would like to speak to my fellow Vietnamese-American in Vietnamese to express my feeling, my resentment, my disappointment, and also to explain to them why.
Need to translate it.
English. Amen accordingly.
We are Vietnamese refugee or running away from the totalitarian communist government regime. You and your family are, have been welcomed to the City of Westminster, have been sheltered by the City of Westminster so that you could start a new life. You and your wife were supported through school or through government assistance and and you were elected to be mayor of the City of Westminster? What have you done for the City of Westminster and for our community? So you conspire with all these thugs and gangs and other opportunists to manipulate the city for your own benefit and for them, their benefit? So when you are denounced by people who are neutral, you give lame excuse and defense? And so once you try to cover that up and that was not successful, you then turn around and express falsehood, attacking people who try to speak up? And you use your power as well as resorting to violence to silence those who want to speak up? But what have you done to benefit the city and the community of deciding, besides?
Misleading to?
Besides misleading the public and your own people?
For their votes.
For their votes? I suggest that you should resign? Karma will visit you or Karma will come back and bite you for things that you have done? So if after all of the investigation and you got charged and convicted, you would bring shame to your family, your wife and your kid? And if you keep holding on to power, holding on to your mayor? And if you keep holding on to power, holding on to your mayorship? And if after all the investigation by the city, the county, the state, and even the federal government, and if you got convicted, you would bring shame to not only yourself but community? And so this community of refugee will be forever ashamed by what you have done? And so the Vietnamese American community would not be able to help its head high when they, when they, they Because they have voted for you to be our representative. So once again, if you still have a conscience, if you, I suggest that you resign. And to the community, if Mayor Ba does not have the courage to resign himself, please speak up and then encourage him and tell him to resign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So at this time, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to come forward to speak? The other speakers present to submit, thank you. Mark Lawrence, and then we will continue with the members wishing to speak on Zoom.
Mark Lawrence, City of Westminster. A lot of bashing tonight. First meeting. Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Ms. Cordell, Mr. Bettenhausen, Mr. Ozaieta. City clerks. Well, I was reading an autobiography of Benjamin Franklin. And here's a, I'm a big guy on quotes. Compromises don't make good leaders. Compromises make great democracies. And I've always been respectful, at least in front of the council. All of you that have talked to me know that I draw the line at some point. And what we've seen the last couple of years, please get it together. Please get it together. We've sat here waiting and waiting and waiting, fight after fight, entrenching yourselves in your positions. That doesn't go over well. That doesn't go over well. Not with me, not with your constituents, not with anybody behind me. These staff members, they work hard. They draw a salary that we pay for. And once again, we see this. And in the beginning, I was against measure S S. I wrote the argument against it in the ballot. When things changed after COVID, I was for it. Now I'm back to being against it. Some of the pet peeve projects that we've seen doesn't include everyone in this town. The Quang Tri Monument going on city property. Jake No said it. $5,000 to clean the monument out here at Freedom Park every two years. So imagine what it's going to cost if that monument goes into Westminster Park. And then at one of the meetings, I use the term attractive nuisance. Mr. Bettenhausen might want to tell them what an attractive nuisance is. If a child climbs up there and falls down, gets hurt, city's going to be responsible. And that means the taxpayers. Now, on a good note, we had a nice event last Friday. And that should bring us together. The city won an award from the Wieland Foundation. And we conserve the most water in the entire county. And that's something that we should be proud of. And instead, this bickering, this antagonizing, it's not going to go over well. And some of you want to move on to higher office. Well, that's your decision. Okay, we wish you well. But think about what you're going to leave in the wake. Our town. Our town. And for people that have lived here for decades like myself, like Jill Dominguez, okay, who was nice enough to contribute the money so the P D could get a canine. But, you know, the way things are going, folks, incredibly sad for our town. Incredibly sad. And getting anger. No. And like I said, anybody who's spoken to me on the phone knows I will hold my position. Mr. Bettenhausen is proof of that. So please think about our town. Think about our, our city and what this means for us and all the pet peeve projects that have been done. That's got to stop discretionary spending has got to stop. You know, we just need the basics. Want our lights to come on, when our streets paved, when our trash picked up. We want to be presentable town. And so once again, please think about what you're doing. Think about it. Thank you very much.
And now we'll turn, is there anyone else? So there being no one in person, we're going to turn over to Zoom mayor. And we do have two members with their hands raised. And the first speaker is the one that says here for the show. You may begin speaking, unmute yourself and then begin speaking.
Sorry, I thought I had changed my name. Amy Walsh. I have a couple of things. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I was running back and forth getting kids water. Couple of things, one of which is it's okay. Sorry, I thought there would be more in person speakers. So first thing on my list is I had a question, more of a comment, I guess, in regards to the org chart that is in one of the presentations. I think there needs to be a little bit of clarification and maybe a little bit of erasing going on in regards to one of the branch lines underneath city of Westminster, there's the mayor and city council. And then the mayor and city council have two lines that go out from it. One to the city attorney, one to the city manager. It needs to just be one to the city manager. We've, we've talked about this before, I recall, and it's the city manager is the go to between the rest of staff and the mayor and city council. That's how this, even the current council wants that to be. So that being said, I think that small line needs to be taken out of there moving forward. Let's see. Yes. The CityNet report. So I have many questions, but I'll limit it down to one. Under success stories on their report, there's one that I believe is counted as a street exit. And I've been kind of curious and I would like CityNet to detail exactly what a street exit is in their opinion. This one in particular is a woman that it looks like slipped and fell and was injured at one of the hotels locally. And CityNet took this woman all the way to city of Tustin to the hospital out that way, which I thought was a little odd considering we have many hospitals right around us. So at that point, if that is considered a street exit, then I'm that kind of upsets me a bit. That to me, that's not an exit. That's something that's temporary. And, you know, what, what happens then? Does CityNet do stuff to help her after the fact? Or is it, okay, done, wipe hands and move on to the next? So I have many questions about the CityNet report. Also with the in regards to the short term rentals. During COVID, for myself and my family, we fell in love with Airbnb and VRBO because it was a way at the time to go and have vacations with being COVID safe. You know, I had family come down just this last year. And my sister said, okay, well, I'll find a hotel near you. And, you know, I don't, I obviously don't want to speak poorly about any of our hotels here in Westminster because I knew they, I know they do a lot for the community. However, I also know that a lot of unsavory people do end up at these hotels. And I was not going to let my nieces stay at said hotels. So I decided I was going to look for Airbnb and VRBOs that were near me. Well, I couldn't find one close, closer than Anaheim. And the one that I found in Anaheim, let's put it this way, I'm still paying it off. It was ridiculously expensive. So Anaheim, you're welcome for my, for the extra taxes. I honestly tried to look in Westminster and because I would have, you know, rather had that happen. And then I remember that, you know, we said no to the short term.
Ms. Walsh, your time is up.
I couldn't see the clock.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Zoom user. Unmute yourself and you may begin speaking. The person that is on Zoom currently, it sounds like you have two things going on at the same time.
I think that we need to invite the other speaker, yes, please.
Mayor, there are no other Zoom speakers at this time. Thank you. If there's anyone else on Zoom wishing to speak at this time, I'm going to try to unmute the Zoom speaker one last time. If the Zoom user is ready to speak and if they unmute themselves, this would be the time to do that. It doesn't look like they're doing that. Mayor, that concludes the oral communication section.
Right. Thank you so much for that. With that, I'd like to close all the communication. Next, we have consent calendar or matter, at least under the consent calendar, I consider routine and may be approved by single motion followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless members of city council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion.
I may have to approve consent calendar.
I would like to pull item 3.8, please.
All right, so Vice Mayor, pull item 3.8, am I correct?
Yes.
So we have the motion and a second.
A second.
But item 3.8, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Was that, just for clarification, the motion was made by council member Ho and the second was made by council member Nguyen? Is that correct? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Monzo, to approve the consent calendar as presented, exempt item 3.8. Would you like a roll call vote?
Yes, roll call vote.
Thank you.
Yes.
Council member Do.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yes.
Council member Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, sir.
All right, item 3.8, CityNet homeless services dashboard report.
Yes, I just had a question, Mayor. Is there anybody from CityNet present?
Good evening, Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor Monzo, city council and city staff. Last week or the week before, we requested that CityNet be present at tonight's meeting. I was notified by them on Monday afternoon that they had a previously scheduled meeting for tonight, so they were unable to attend.
Okay. The question I had, I don't know if you're, you're going to be able to answer this is on the, the locations. Because I think I've requested and I think other council members have requested it in the past. As far as to give us a better, you know, breakdown of what they're doing and on the location is there's just a bunch of numbers that, you know, doesn't mean anything to the, the normal person that, I mean, how are we supposed to figure out where these locations are?
Correct. And I, I've spoken with CityNet several times after your request, and I believe councilman Do's request for better information in terms of locations. Those coordinates you see are the, the geo coordinates. And when they enter it through Esri as the same as when we use our Esri, it uses a geo coordinates to put it on the map. I don't know why they, they weren't able to take those geo coordinates and put it into cross streets. And I will address that with them again.
Yeah, I just, it just was very this, you know, I was a not upset, but I was just kind of sad to see that they couldn't do a better job. You know, we requested it and they just didn't come through for us. So that was pretty much my, my question was that, that if we want to see it, you know, we want the community to see where folks are, you know, congregating and the efforts in to do that. And I, I think in the past, they had mentioned that we were getting, we were getting them twice a week.
Yes.
Are we still getting them twice a week, CityNet?
Previously, we were getting two CityNet workers for four hours on Monday and Wednesdays. One of those workers has since left CityNet to seek employment somewhere else. So right now we're receiving one CityNet worker every Monday and Wednesday for four hours.
So since we're receiving less, are we, are we paying less?
Not that I know of. Our contract is still the same. We have requested that they send us an additional worker because we are supposed to have two per our contract.
Okay. All right, well, I guess we have to look into that. Why we're, we should be getting, we're paying the same amount of money. We should make sure we're receiving the full service.
I have questions.
Thank you.
I know that you work hand in hand with CityNet. Are they, are they having only one person working on this project or they have more than one? They can, they send a representative to the meeting? They know that we have the meeting scheduled for them to, to speak of. And they don't have anybody to represent beside the main person who is already scheduled for the meeting?
When, when we notified them that we needed them at this meeting tonight, they had told us that they would, that they would be here and that they would be in touch with us to let us know who would be attending. And then Monday afternoon, I received an email that they were unable to send anybody because they had a previously scheduled meeting that was conflicting with this one.
If I may ask, city manager, first of all, we have this meeting quarterly and, and quarterly only. So our request to them is that we So our request to them is that we, you know, they are to be present at every quarterly meeting at the minimum. And we, I know that we haven't been too happy with their service. So it's really important, it's imperative that they're here. I'd like to see if they can come next, at the next meeting. Okay, since they're not here today and we'd like to maybe schedule, table this and for the next, next time, we could discuss it.
So to, to kind of address that, it's not so much that it's quarterly. It's just at some point in the past, we did receive these CityNet reports consistently on a monthly basis. At some point, CityNet stopped sending them on a monthly basis, which is why they've now added up to what appears to be quarterly. So they are aware these CityNet reports are being presented at the council meeting. So it's no surprise, you know, to kind of address what, what Councilmember Nguyen was asking about having one person in particular. They've had more than one person in particular show up to make the explanation before. So you had Matt and then you also had another, another female, I forget what her name is, but she was also, she's been on the calls as well to, to address the CityNet reports. You know, it, right now, it's, it's a bit of a, you know, we know that's a priority. CityNet should not be surprised that these are being put on the agenda regularly as they have been. It, it's really not our intent to have them quarterly. It's really our intent to have them monthly as the monthly report comes out for the previous month. So definitely stress, stress that. But just to kind of address some of the concerns that, you know, you all have regarding the reports and the way that the things are being provided, the data, rather, is being provided in the reports and it's not clear. It just seems to be the way that CityNet wants to produce the reports for us, which is why we keep coming back in circles with questions as to what they're trying to report and what we're trying to analyze out of those reports. And unfortunately, without CityNet's presence, we are unable to decipher what it is they're, they're trying to report that they're doing for us.
You know, I'm sorry, I just want to finish what I was saying. Is that I feel like we're at their mercy. So I think it's at this time, I mean, it's been going on for quite a while, a couple of years, I'd say. So, and I know we've had this contract with them since 2017. And so it's been at least five years and I think it's time for us to review, review their performance. And I, I cannot imagine that they're the only company around. And so I'd like to see if we can like review and see if we're getting, you know, bang for the buck. And so to see what is, I, I seem to remember we pay the contracts like 7,500 a month or something like that. And so I don't know if that's a lot or that's little. And so I'd like to see if there are any competitive bits, if we could like maybe put a bit out there for RFP. And because I feel like we're at their mercy, they should be serving us. But instead, I feel like we're kind of begging them to come and begging them for reports. And I know that we've had many speakers who've been very unhappy with them. And just to be fair, I'd like just to, you know, for you to review. If I could ask our City Manager to review and see what else can we do? Is there alternative? Does it give us an idea of where are we at? Are we going to be down to one person? Are we going to be adjusting the fees? Are we going to fix things? And are the reports going to be this way? Or is it going to go back to monthly? And are, are they going to be coming quarterly at least? Make an appearance so we can ask our correct questions directly and, and get some answers.
So just to, just to add on that as well, I'm sure Commander McCormick and Chief Lenny can address this as well. But the intent as, at some point in the past was that we were going to eliminate or, you know, terminate services with CityNet once we hired our own liaisons who could, you know, provide those services. And they can, of course, touch on what, you know, where we are in that hiring phase. Because the, the, the ultimate goal was to, to just have it all done in-house as opposed to contracting out with CityNet.
Perhaps this is the, the time to make that assessment because you do have two officers, liaison officers already. And you kind of weigh and see if they are really doing anything for us anymore. So I just kind of feel like the services have kind of been reduced, but we're, I mean, tremendously and we're paying the same amount. So it's not so much the money, are we getting our, our needs met? So it's time for us to take a second look.
Commander McCormick, last time, I, I think I remember asking if we had hired the liaisons and I don't, I was, and I didn't catch on that they were hired already. Are they, are they hired?
The civilian case manager?
Yes.
She just completed her chief's interview the other day and she was offered a job and she will be starting with us sometime next month.
So that's just her, her one, was we were supposed to hire two?
One of the two positions, correct.
All right. And then currently, how, how, how much do you or HLOs get out of CityNet? I mean, are they already available or the phone when you need them? Because obviously you're, you're, we're only getting them one day out of a week, four hours. So if you need them on a, on a non-day they're here, are they available to you?
Yes, they are. We, we've called them on the phone before for resources and they, they, they assist us and help us out. They're with us in our vehicle for eight hours a week, four on Monday, four on Wednesday. But if we need them on a Thursday, we just simply call the case manager and they usually answer the phone unless they're, they're on something else. And they help us out with the resources and making phone calls.
Okay. Do you feel you're getting their full service? I mean, personally, I mean professionally, personally?
Well, well, I will tell you that as far as caseworker, case managers go, we are definitely in need of case managers more of a full-time basis. The HLOs are out in the field, doing fieldwork, making those contacts, scheduling those meetings and appointments for the individuals out on the street that want services. The case manager is the one that is going to contact all the resources such as shelters, permanent housing, rehabilitation centers to try and get those folks off the street and into housing. We have the ability to, to put certain folks up into hotels under certain programs, but we can't do that for all of them. They, they have to meet certain guidelines in order to get into those programs. The caseworker, the case managers, they do a lot of the, the behind-the-scenes work for us, if you will. They're the ones going through contacting all those important resources that we need. The HLOs are the ones out in the field, boots on the ground, contacting the individuals, trying to convince them that it's better to go, get off the street and live a better life.
All right, very well. It just seems like we're getting less from them for the same amount. So it seems like it's just progressively, we're getting less from them over time. So, all right, thank you very much. With that, I'd like to motion.
Mayor, if I may on that.
Yes, please.
To add a little to that, that we just job offered, as the commander was saying, a caseworker who will only be working part-time. As you just heard, we're only receiving eight hours total a week from CityNet. If we were to make that position full-time, we'd be getting 40 hours a week by somebody who's 100% dedicated to the city of Westminster. So we would, my math's bad, quadruple or more our coverage of casework for the homeless if we were to make a move like that. And I believe in our budget, we would be able to fund it with the funds that we currently are paying CityNet to make that position full-time. But I do believe that would be a council decision with our position allocation plan.
Yeah, I really wanted to thank the chief for sharing his concerns about the issue of homelessness. And I want to thanks our police department for really helpful. So I believe that CityNess, you know, they hear clearly and loud from City Council. We really have concerns and I, I think that it's really disappointed, you know, like our city, we have to ask them to show, to be in a meeting. I think that that's a responsibility that CityNet, they need to be here and provide us a report. So it's kind of really disappointed. But I think that they, they understand how disappointed we all are, okay? So I think we have the motion. Yeah, with what it costs already, I, I'd like to move to receive and file 3.8.
All right, so we have the motion and, okay, we have a motion.
Quick question, real quick.
Yes.
What was the wording on the contract between our city and CityNet? Is that they, they have to provide eight hours of manpower a week or?
Let's, let's put it into the microphone for the record.
Our contract stipulates that we get eight hours a week by two individuals. The individual that left CityNet to seek employment somewhere else just left a month ago. So they're trying to find, like everybody else, i- i- in respect to them, they are trying to find somebody for us, like every other organization across the country. They are hurting trying to hire people as well.
So technically, they have fulfilled the contract, am I correct? Two individual for eight hours a week, is that 16 hours of manpower or, oh, 16 hours, not?
Correct.
They're down to one.
Two individuals, eight hours a week is what we're supposed to be getting. Right now, we're getting one individual.
Have we established a communication and voiced our concern to the leadership in CityNet?
Yes, we have.
And what was its response?
They are trying to find a second person for us.
Fine. And how long ago was that?
When the individual left, which was about a month ago.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Commander.
You know, I would like to agenda, like to put on an agenda. I know I'm going to forget if I don't. For next time, I'd like to see if you can, I don't know if you need more time. But for the next meeting, I'd like to see if we can, you know, do an analysis. I think it's, like I said, it's been at least five years since we, we, we look into the CityNet agreement or a contract. So we do have a breach of contract. But then I think this might be the opportunity where we want to make that assessment to see if we could, you know, help ourselves because we've been waiting for them to help us. So I think this might be a good time for us to look at, like I said earlier. But I, I want to formally put that on the agenda for next time. And I think it sounds to me like we're going to get more quality help coming from within. When you hire someone part-time and with that money that we're paying CityNet, what, what can we do? As the chief pointed out, that we could have someone full-time. So, so, you know, I said earlier, like, we'll probably get more bang for our buck. And I'm looking for better service. And I think they served us very well early on. So, I mean, I, I don't want to bash CityNet, but they were the only ones around at the time. And at this time, I think we, our needs have changed. But we just, it's, it's our fault that we, we haven't assessed, reassessed our needs. So rather than demanding that we have the second, the second person from CityNet, maybe it's time for us to just make that transition and, and hire someone full-time, see what we can do, what use, what, what can we, can we do with that money? The 7,500, that's a lot per month. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to receive and file for this item. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And that motion was by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo to receive and file agenda item 3.8 relating to CityNet homeless services. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you so much. So next we have public hearings.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time for the public hearing. So anyone wishing to speak on the open session of the public hearing may speak in person or via Zoom. Speakers during the public hearing comment will each have five minutes to speak on the public hearing item currently listed on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person should complete a speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium. At that time, state your name, city of residence, and you may begin speaking for five minutes. Any person wishing to address the City Council via Zoom should press the raise your hand button. If you are using a telephone and have dialed in, press star nine to raise your hand. When your name is called, please enable your microphone. You may press the unmute button and begin speaking. If you are calling from a telephone or cell, please press star six on your dial pad to mute and unmute yourself. And at that time, please state your name and city of residence for the record.
All right, so now let's open public hearing adoption of fiscal year 22 slash 23 annual action plan for community development block rent, CDBG and Home Investment Partnership Act program federal funds. First, I'd like to have a staff report.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council, I'm Debbie Carita, the interim community development director. And for this public hearing, our housing specialist, Michael Sun, will provide the staff report and a brief PowerPoint presentation and will be available to answer any questions afterwards.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Michael Sun. I'm the housing specialist in the community development department. Tonight's public hearing is to adopt the final fiscal year 2022, 23 annual action plan for CDBG and home funds. Can we change the screen to the PowerPoint? Thank you. Here's an overview of the annual action plan schedule. At the February 9th, council meeting was the first public hearing and it was a meeting to identify community needs and priorities. At the March 9th council meeting, a draft of the annual action plan along with CDBG funding request was presented to council, which also initiated the required 30-day public review period of the annual action plan. And tonight's hearing is the second public hearing, which closes the 30-day public review period of the draft annual action plan and for council's consideration to adopt the annual action plan. This is a brief breakdown of the proposed use of CDBG and home funds. More detailed information of the proposed use of funds can be found in the staff report and in the attachments one and two to the staff report. The city will be received or will have approximately $2.7 million which, in CDBG funds, which is comprised of annual CDBG allocations for fiscal year 2022, 23 and carryover funds, which will be allocated towards public services, administration, and community development projects. Just a reminder pursuant to CDB regulations, a max of 15% of the city's fiscal year 2022 slash 23 CDBG allocations can be spent on public services. A max of 20% can be spent on administration and the remaining amount is to fund community development projects. The city will have approximately $1.9 million in home funds, which comprises of our annual allocation of home funds for fiscal year 2022, 23, along with the carryover funds pursuant to home regulations. A max of 10% can be spent on administrating, administration. And the remaining amount will be set aside for a future affordable housing project that is yet to be determined. And I just want to make a note on the PowerPoint slide for the set aside for a future affordable housing project. There was a typo with the amount. The correct amount should state $1.871,525, which is correctly noted in the staff report along in the annual action plan as well.
Since you're on that slide, can you clarify Tulalum Park, formerly Park West Park? Is it $400 or $400,000 or?
It's 400,000. I'm sorry, yes. I do want to note that we, the HUD has not published the CDBG and home allocations for this next coming fiscal year. But we've given, been given direction that by HUD, that the allocations could increase or decrease by 10%. So staff is recommending that the mayor's city council approve the final fiscal year 2022, 23 annual action plan. So staff is recommending that the mayor's city council approve the final fiscal year 2022/23 Annual Action Plan inclusive of any funding adjustments to CDBG and home activities once city is notified of final CDBG and home funding allocations and authorize the interim city manager to execute the documents required for submission of CDBG and home funding approval to HUD for review and approval. And that concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions that you might have.
Really appreciate your presentation. I just have a few question for this item. I'm kind of curious, how come that this year funding will receive a lot more than in the past? I think that's really red news. And I mean, it's really nice to see that we would be able to have carry over from the last year or in the past that we had not really used that.
So to answer your question, I'm thinking the 2.7 million CDBG funds, that's in large part to a CDBG loan that was repaid this year. So that's part of the reason why there's a larger amount that's being carried over for the next fiscal year.
But it's not because of COVID, right? So that's why we receive more.
Correct, it's not.
Okay, got it. Okay. So I think that all the number here look really, really reasonable. One of the things, our city staff for working really hard, especially this is a really, really nice coordination between all the department head. I know that all the department head have to work together to come up with a really reasonable amount for all the services and programs. I'm really happy to see that. Really appreciate, yeah.
We appreciate their help as well.
Yeah, all right.
Just one quick question. The, if the city staff can verify the independent accounting firms, Clinton, Larson, and Allen, is that the newly elected to conduct the financial audit or?
I'm sorry.
Or is that the one that we've been, we've been using for several years in the past?
The one that we've been using in the past, but we did do an RFP, and they were selected.
It was selected. Thank you.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
You mentioned that there are the $400,000 spent for Tulalum, I mean Tulalum Park or West Park Park. You single out that park. What, can you tell us why we spent with the 400K? What about the other parks?
I'm going to ask Jake or Vanessa to answer that.
We need a mayor, vice mayor, member council. That $400,000 applying for Tony Lamb Park, formerly known as Park West Park, it was for the playground equipment, and it was selected because it was in the CDBG area.
Okay, just one time, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, please, please, okay.
I have a question regarding, maybe for Ms. Carita? Yes. So we have CDBG funds, so we don't necessarily buy law. We don't have to spend all of that money yearly, correct?
There is an opportunity to balance forward the funds if they are.
For how long?
I'll answer that question. So every year, CDBG and home vary differently with, we do have to spend the money in a timely fashion. So with CDBG every year right around May, HUD conducts what's called a timeliness test, which essentially means that we can't have a certain amount of CDBG funds in our line of credit. So there are expenditure deadlines every year for CDBG.
Okay, because I'm interested in this very last bullet here, the unallocated CDBG funds of 1.294 million. And, you know, I don't think we need to spend every dime we have, and so I'm very interested in that and how that could be allocated to the homeless project and anything that we're doing. So could I, could you explain?
Michael, do you want to explain where the funds came from, the 1.9 million?
Well, it says unallocated CDBG.
It's unallocated because we received this year a payment, a loan payment that was originally from CDBG funds.
Yeah, I saw that.
That wasn't part of our regular allocation, but it will be monitored for our expenditures. Is that correct, Michael?
That's correct.
Yeah, what I want to say is that we, and maybe city manager, I just want to say that we don't need to spend if we don't have to. And I, you know, this is what I like it to be used for, are to address homelessness. I know that's an issue we're trying to solve and along with other cities. So, you know, by all means, don't spend every dime we have, and so this is good. I mean, I'm just saying that that's a bullet that we need to have. So we, you know, if there's any spending that you've allocated, for instance, I don't understand, like Councilmember Wen mentioned, $400,000, does it need to be 400? That seems, that sounds really steep, while other parks are, you know, I don't know. I mean, I see less money being spent elsewhere. So, you know, if you could just take a look and see if there's any money that we could put towards the, we don't have to allocate all of CDBG money, use some of that for our homeless projects. We will need a chunk. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and, and that's one of the reasons for the 1.2 or almost 1.3 million.
Yeah, that's great.
We identified that for a future affordable housing project so that we can identify that money if something comes, and especially for that type of project.
But what about other bullets? Do you have to spend that much? I mean, without having to, I don't want to have to ask you in so much detail, but say, for instance, I see that number being so big, the Park West Park Improvement Project, $400,000. Do you need to spend that? Can you refrain from spending? Because we are gonna need to build some homeless, homeless projects and et cetera.
I think that'd be all dependent on the work spec of the actual project once that the project is, comes to fruition, so I can't quite answer that quite yet. But if there are opportunities for project savings, we'll definitely reconsider setting aside any unspent funds towards a homeless affordable housing project.
Yeah, I just don't want us to, when we see money, we're gonna go spend money. And that money is really needed for homeless, homeless projects. And I know 400,000 isn't a lot, 100,000 isn't a lot, but, you know, putting towards this unallocated funds and having a big chunk for our homeless projects, that would be really good if we could like build on that and accumulate 2, 3 million, and we can do something really grand for the homeless.
If I can add, as there, we do have additional funding that's not part of this plan. So we're expecting to be receiving approximately 1.6 million in home ARP funds through the American Rescue Plan. We're still in the very early stages of identifying potential projects for that source of funding, but that will be a separate public hearing for those funds.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so thank you so much. If we don't have any other western concerns from members of the city council, I'd like to hear from a member from the public. Now is time for public comments, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and we did receive a public speaker card for Terry Rains. If you could please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Terry Rains, Westminster. On page seven, number five of the fiscal year 2022/23 Annual Action Plan, it states, quote, "Summary of Public Comments," then "to be completed after public comment period," end quote. The public comment period is over, but nothing is noted there. Then, on page 17, in the second row of boxes, it says, quote, "Six comments made at the public hearing of 2/9/2022. See Appendix G: Public Comments," end quote. I made comments at that public hearing, but I don't see an Appendix G attached to the annual plan in the staff report. I have already provided my input on the annual action plan and the consolidated plan as well. Tonight, I merely want to ask why there is no attachment G in the staff report. I would like to see the six comments referenced, as well as see how my own comments, which were fairly general in nature, were characterized and have confirmation that all of these comments are indeed being provided with the report as required. To Councilwoman Ho's inquiry on the Park West Park, I will remind council that we have a Parks Master Plan, and they work very, very hard on that staff and the commission. And we prioritized our parks and the playgrounds in those parks. And 400,000, the other parks, there's labor and then there's equipment. So it's, it's not completely out of line, and again, that's in line with our Parks Master Plan. On a related note, I recently attended a Zoom meeting hosted by the Office of Care Coordination acting as a collaborative applicant for the Orange County Continuum of Care, the COC, with representatives from the city of Costa Mesa and the city of Westminster. The purpose of the meeting was to review both cities' proposed use of, as mentioned earlier, the home ARP funding, provide technical assistance to the applicants, and identify potential opportunities for collaboration in administering home ARP funds. Now, I had hoped to hear our own city staff present some sort of concrete proposed uses of those home ARP fund like the representatives from Costa Mesa did. But sadly, just like with the other regular annual home funds referenced in tonight's annual action plan, our staff just listed the categories that are allowable to use those funds as our plan, but that's not really a plan at all. I would like to remind this council and city staff, the cities that get funding in general are those that have shovel-ready projects or at least specific plan ideas, and those that partner with other agencies and major nonprofits. Our city has lost out on a lot of funding because either we didn't apply for it or we did, but then we didn't present a strong project use plan for the available funding. You know the saying, you snooze, you lose, and I don't want our city to lose anymore. Thank you.
If there are anyone, is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on this item? Yes. We can submit it after, after your comments.
Hey, Roger Mindrum. Kimberly Ho, do you not recall within just the last few months, the money that was spent? You guys all attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Marguerite Park. How much did that cost? Was it 200,000 or was that 400,000 for that one park?
Sorry, which park are you referring to?
The huge fireman, fire, firehouse.
That was not funded out of CDBG or home, so I think Jake, can you answer?
Sure. So you're talking about spending, taking park money that's supposed to be for the community and reallocating that to people who don't, not only don't contribute to our community, but are a burden on our, on our community. Please reconsider your thought process on what you've just said.
If there's anyone else wishing to speak on Zoom, please raise your hand at this time. Thank you, Mayor. Seeing no one else raising their hand on Zoom or speakers here, that concludes the.
All right, so with that, I'd like to close public comments. First, I would thanks our city, city staff, and especially the department head. I think that we, we're lucky that we have a really good staff who been doing a lot research and come up with a good idea to allocate all the funding to improve and maintain all the services that we have. And I believe that our staff already explained that we're going to have, we're going to reserve the funding for affordable housing project in order to serve the issue of homelessness. And I think that we've been doing that for years. And for years that our city staff recommend many, many nice, reasonable, affordable projects to help low-income families and to help to serve the issue of homelessness. So I'm really happy with this proposal. So I move for approval if no other concerns or?
I just have a question, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, I know we've spoken this, about this, I think the last time we had the, last year. My question is, are we actively looking for a partner or somewhere where we can spend the home funds for maybe a affordable housing project or teaming up with somebody? Are we actively, staff actively pursuing that or trying to find a property, trying to find a partner for a low-income housing project with the home funds?
Yes, staff is working on an RFP. So home funds is, there's strict regulations of what we can spend the money on, but we are gonna be drafting an RFP soon.
So you can come up with a good plan and maybe partner up and maybe seek some additional grant funding for that? So I know we've spoken that in the past, just want to make sure we're still on that track. All right, thank you.
Was there a second motion to?
I was gonna second that motion.
All right, so we have the motion and second to approve as recommended.
Thank you, Mayor, and that was a mayor made by Mayor Ta, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo. And that was to approve the final fiscal year 2022-23 Annual Action Plan inclusive of any funding adjustments to CDBG and home activities once city is notified of final CDBG and home funding allocations and authorize the interim city manager to execute the documents required for submission of CDBG and home funding approval to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD for review and approval, and I did note an earlier correction, so that is included as well. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho? Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you so much. Next, we have regular business, 5.1 Strategic Plan Goal Number Two, Develop and Implement Specific Plans for Little Saigon Downtown District and the West Side. Strategic Plan Objective, create a priority list of plan that combines those lists in the general plan and those recommended as part of the strategic planning workshop. So staff report, please.
Mayor, good evening, Mayor, City Council members, members of the public. My name's Adolph Joseheda. I'm the interim Assistant City Manager. As part of tonight's strategic plan update on goal number two, which is to develop and implement specific plans for Little Saigon Downtown and the West Side, Planning Manager Steve Ratke and I will be walking you through the advanced planning analysis that was used to develop a priority list. So tonight, we're bringing to you a priority list of specific plans. With that, we'll move on to the presentation. Thank you. So tonight, as part of the presentation, we're gonna touch on a few topics. First, we're gonna talk about the strategic plan background, the general plan vision, which I know all of you are huge fans of. Mayor Ta, you, you moved forward with the general plan update many years ago. That was you and Councilmember Contreras, and I know Carlos Manzo, you run the planning commission. Kimberly is on oversight commissions, and I've had conversations with the other elected officials regarding the, the general plan and the vision that was set forth in 2016. We're gonna talk about the prioritized specific plans, and we're also gonna address some concerns and comments about where other specific plans are. Which ones have we worked on and completed, and which ones are ongoing currently? We want to, we want to encourage a healthy discussion on this from the council for the benefit of the public. And then we will close out the presentation by discussing the next steps of the strategic plan. Remember, the strategic plan identified three goals, and then we are incrementally working our way towards, towards accomplishing that vision. So the strategic plan, planning workshop, the purpose was to develop the city's first-ever strategic plan, and that took place on January 17th of this year. City council membership, city council participated in this, city leadership were a part of it, and we also had the public in attendance. We were able to develop collectively three goals, the first one of which was to achieve financial stability. The second is that what we're here to discuss tonight, the development of these specific plans. And the third goal was to attract, develop, and And the third goal was to attract, develop and retain well-qualified staff. You might ask yourself why, why the specific plans are so important. So the development of specific plans is an excellent way or tool to promote redevelopment and achieve the goal of delivering the community's vision that was set forth in 2016 with the adoption of the, of the general plan update. Tonight, tonight, go back one, Steve. Tonight is the. Tonight is the second step of developing this strategy for addressing the specific plan issues or goals. The first step was an inter-office memorandum where we took the goal that was developed at the, at the workshop and verified that it was consistent with the general plan update. We did that already. And tonight, we're going to create the priority list that we've, we've been talking about. The general plan vision is very important. As I, as I stated earlier, I gave credit to all the elected officials for your support of the general plan over the years. A few more things to remember about the, the general plan. It was a one million dollar investment that the city made. It was partially granted, funded with grant funds, excuse me. Due to this effort, we've already received millions of dollars in grant funding because we were able to create a vision and work our way towards implementing it. So it is already paid off by tenfold. The general plan is a roadmap to developing the community's vision. That's very, very important. As we, as we talk about different aspects of the general plan, it's important to note that this was the largest outreach effort in the city's history. It was awarded a largest outreach effort, most successful outreach effort for the county for that year. So a lot of participation went into that general plan. Now, one of the main illustrations that came out of the general plan is what you see here, which is the general plan land use map. And within this map, we had staff members, Chris Wong, who was, who was our senior planner. He put together this amazing presentation. So we'll go through these, these districts that are clear, that are identified in the general plan. So we have a total of six mixed-use districts that are identified. I'm going to go through and we're going to highlight each one so that we can all get an understanding of where these zones are as it pertains to the, the geography of the city. So mixed-use district one, as you can see there in the illustration. We'll go ahead and zoom in on that. District one is a mixed-use civic center district. As part of Steve's presentation, when he comes up here, he's going to be talking about some of the refinements that we're proposing for some of these mixed-use districts. As we've, after developing the general plan, interacting with developers and meeting with stakeholders, community stakeholders, we have some ideas as to how these planning zones can be modified to be more appropriate for the specific plans that we're proposing. At the bottom of this map here, you'll see Green Lantern Mobile Home Park. We're going to address strategies from lessons learned from the past about how to address mobile home parks as it pertains to long-range strategic planning. So we're, Steve will spend some time talking about some strategies there. The next district is number two. And as we zoom into that, is known as the mixed-use downtown. We're also proposing some modifications to this and actually expanding it and creating three separate districts. And Steve is going to do a good job of explaining that. This district is Westminster Boulevard from pretty much the 405 freeway to Hoover Street. Number three is known as the mixed-use corridor. Primarily focuses attention on Beach Boulevard near the intersection of Westminster and proceeds to the west to Hoover, encompassing both sides of the corridor. Number four, we're very familiar with number four. It is the Westminster Mall. And Steve will touch a little bit on where we are in the process of delivering this specific plan to the community in just a bit. The next one is mixed-use district five, which is the Little Saigon district. Pay particular attention and, and the next illustrations that are coming up, you'll see the mobile home parks along the corridor highlighted. Because again, we've learned a lot of lessons from the past on that. And number six is mixed-use district six, which is known as the northeast mixed-use district. That to the left, to the far left is Dennis Dillon RV, left out of the district. So we, we have some ideas on that. We have some really large undeveloped land that you see there as, as part of the southern portion of that boundary. And this is along Springdale between the 405 and Garden Grove Boulevard, northwest part of town. So at this point, I would like to turn it over to Steve, who's going to be presenting a detailed look at each of the mixed-use districts and walk you through some of the modifications that we're proposing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to let you know that we are talking about city-initiated specific plans. And that's important to keep in mind because at any time, a private property owner could come in and file a specific plan application for their parcel. But these are city-initiated specific plans. So we're going to go back and talk about some of our thoughts. These are preliminary thoughts, of course, about some of the ways that we could prioritize for specific plans and how we could look at an approach to handling each of the individual districts that Adolfo identified. So if we could go to the next slide. We do think that district two is one of the top priorities. And in just a moment, I'll show you that we think that the eastern part of that district in the downtown could be bifurcated from the rest of the downtown district. If you take a look at that district, which like Adolfo said, stretches from the 405 freeway all the way to Hoover. We believe that the western portion deserves its own specific plan. And the eastern portion, east of Golden West, really deserves its own special focus because those two areas of Westminster Boulevard have slightly different development patterns. The structures in the eastern part, if we go to the next slide. Those are quite a bit older. This is part, the part of town is part of the original settlement from the eighteen seventies. So we think there's some unique opportunities to create the kind of walkable downtown vision that's envisioned in the, in the city's general plan that would be specific to this particular part of Westminster Boulevard. So we think that this is a priority area. And then moving on to the next priorities. We think that Little Saigon District Five also represents some interesting possibilities. The one thing that we wanted to state is that since these are publicly, potentially publicly funded, city-initiated specific plans, we do believe that it's important to exclude the mobile home parks from this process mainly because we don't want to incentivize the conversion of mobile home parks as part of a public specific plan. Of course, if a private property owner who owns his mobile home park wanted to initiate that process, they have the right to do so. But as a city-specific plan to motivate and to hopefully encourage mixed use and economic development, we'd like to exclude that. So for this diagram, we're showing what happens if you exclude the four mobile home parks in the Little Saigon area. In addition, the city's two specific plans that have already been adopted are also in the Little Saigon area. The red area to the east, which is on Bolson Burghurst, of course, is the Bolso Row specific plan, which was adopted in 2018. And the larger area to the west is the Moran Street specific plan, which was adopted by the mayor and council in 2012. So if you exclude all those parcels, what you have left are really kind of a mix of commercial sites throughout the rest of the Little Saigon district. For example, north of Moran, you have some industrial uses and some media uses. And then you have a mix of commercial uses further to the west. For this reason, we believe that the approach to Little Saigon should be an approach that's similar to what's happened with Bolso Row, where we look at the area and smaller entities, perhaps individual parcels for the potential of smaller specific plans to develop. Many of those would be developed and initiated by private property owners. So that's a little bit different approach in the downtown area where we think that the city could initiate a comprehensive specific plan. And then moving on to the next priority is the central part of the downtown area, which is that stretch, if we go to the next slide, a stretch that's sort of between Willow and Golden West. And we also think that there's an opportunity to include the Westminster Center as part of the specific plan process. We would have to absorb it into the mixed-use general plan category. In order to do that, this particular part of downtown probably offers the greatest opportunity in terms of acreage to see mixed use and new developments as well. And if we can go to the next slide, I think we're also, in this process has allowed us to think, where else could we look beyond the district that the general plan identifies for potential specific plans? We also believe that another area that might benefit from a specific plan that could be looked at as part of the overall downtown area would be that area west of the 405 freeway that extends out to Rancho Road. We think there's a great opportunity to consider these parcels as part of a specific plan process that could also allow for mixed use. And moving on, we'd like to also indicate our thoughts on the corridor. Again, this is an area that is bounded by Westminster Boulevard from west, excuse me, east of Hoover to Beach. And then, of course, Beach Boulevard corridor from about 21st Street down to almost Hazard. And this is mostly oriented towards Beach Boulevard. We don't feel that this is the highest priority, but we do feel that at some point the city should consider a, a city-initiated specific plan for this district as well. And the next one is district one, which is the civic center where we are tonight. We also feel, just as we do with the Little Saigon area, that it would be important to exclude the mobile home park from a city-initiated specific plan. We feel that's a critical step to take. And when you exclude it, then you're really just dealing with the mix of public and commercial and residential uses that make up the rest of the civic center area. But again, we believe that at the moment, the civic center is not of the highest priority. And then finally, the last district, of course, is the northwest district. This is really an area of its owner, under a single ownership. We do believe that there's an opportunity at this, with this district to pick up the commercial properties to the west. And we honestly think that because this is under a current single ownership, there's no incentive by that owner to do anything. We feel almost probably of the lowest priority to take any type of city-funded, city-initiated specific plan option at this time. So in a nutshell, those are the kind of the rankings of the priorities. We really think that the most immediate needs and most immediate ability to see results would be in the downtown area and also in Little Saigon. And we'd also like to tell you a little bit about the specific plans that we already have adopted and in the works, as Adolfo said. So the Moran Street specific plan was adopted in 2012. It was, it took about three and a half years to go through the process, but it covers about twenty-two acres, essentially along Moran Street, includes the, the garden mall and some of the commercial areas in that district. To date, nothing has been developed in that particular specific plan area, but we anticipate over the next coming few years, we will see quite a bit of change there. And then, of course, as we mentioned earlier, the Bolso Row specific plan, which covers a five-acre site, was approved by the mayor and council in 2018. And those are the two specific plans that we have as of today. And then if we can go to the next slide, we will talk about the Westminster Mall specific plan. That is a, a plan that we're working on at this very moment. And we believe that this year, we will be in position to, the council and the community will see a lot of progress towards that specific plan. There's still a lot of things that we're working on, on that plan to make sure that we've got a, a good public draft put together and conversations with property owners and others. But you will see movement in that area. That, of course, is critical to the city's future. That is almost a hundred acres along the 405 freeway and represents the city's best effort for mixed use in the next coming couple of years. And those are, those are, of course, the status of our current and pending specific plans in the process. And now we're ready to open it up for discussion if, if you wish.
Thank you, Steve, for, for your presentation. Really appreciate all the work from, from our staff. So, okay, city council, have any, any comment or have any concerns or have any question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Steve and maybe Adolfo as well. So the, the priority ranking, the way you have them one, one, two, you know, down the road. How do you feel about those ranking and that's the best possible scenarios for us to come bring those to fruition? I mean, that, that would give us the best shot. Those are realistic, right? Can you, can you kind of talk about the way you, the thinking behind the ranking of these?
A very good question, Vice Mayor. I, I think that a lot of it is based on the idea of what realistically would be achievable based on resources that the city has. Also recognizing that specific plans are not simple things. They take quite a bit of time. As I indicated earlier, the Moran Street specific plan, for example, was a three and a half year process. It covered about, you know, twenty-two acres. The Westminster Mall specific plan, which is underway. It's been about three and a half years now. We're not quite completed, but so it's probably going to end up being about four. So keeping that in mind and then looking at other factors such as resources and really what is available to us, we really think that these smaller areas such as the east part of downtown, it might be easier to focus on those areas or smaller geographically. And it might be easier to see traction and things happen with the specific plan in a more defined area. But that's part of our thinking process. But also acknowledging that some areas of the city might benefit more based on blight conditions, conditions of dilapidated buildings or age buildings and structures. So we, we factor that in as well.
I'm more interested in, you know, the, how you got the top priorities. One is that it's mainly through Golden, Golden between Westminster Boulevard, between Golden West and Hoover. I'm just thinking about momentum when it comes to the Westminster Crossing project. You know, if we develop that, then, I mean, it's already there. So the energy is there, the momentum is there. Is that why you chose that as your top number one?
That is absolutely right. We did consider that. We, we were aware that with the, the new Mendez Park, Westminster Crossings, the city has already invested quite a bit of infrastructure, so to speak, and public resources into that district. So a, a good argument could be made that if we've already taken steps to invest money and time of the city, why not go the next step and try to further refine that area and improve it in a positive way?
Good. And then you also spoke about, I think it was in the Moran Street specific plan that there was some grant funding. Was, were we able to secure some grant funding? Can we, have, do we have those possibilities for these, for grant funding?
Yes. We, we don't know of any specific grants at the moment, but I can tell you that a lot of state agencies and also SCAG, Southern California Association of Government, often have grants available, but they're often for specific things such as active transportation or climate change. So we, we might be able to get in the future grant money to pay for some of these projects. But of course, there is always going to be some kind of string attached to it where we have to comply with some type of regional or state requirement to address, say, active transportation within the specific plan or other things.
But Westminster Boulevard is a, I mean, a big thoroughfare where we have, you know, mass transit and, you know, and we're going to create something that we could get people, you know, up and down the boulevard quicker. And also, as far as for the environment, if we talk about, you know, trees and, you know, adding trees to this corridor, I mean, is that something that, that would help us generate grant funding?
Those are all good points. The fact that it's a transit-rich corridor, the fact that there's both the regular bus line and a, and a rapid bus line on that corridor, that's important. But one, one of the biggest opportunities we have with district two is the fact that most of it resides, resides in what the state of California considers socially economically challenged area. So that, that leads us to potential grant funds a lot easier, a lot more logically than, than other districts that are not in that type of a corridor. So. Easier, a lot more logically than, than other districts that are not in that type of a corridor. So. Considering the state of the city's finances, grant funding is important. Like I said, grant funding paid for. All of our active transportation projects. It's also paid for most of the general plan. It paid for the mobility element. But we have to find the money and we have to, we have to be strategic about it. Right? So.
Realistically, I know we have, you know, six. Potential specific plans, but realistically, how much, how many you think we would be able to take on? One, two, three, I mean?
Those are great questions. So what we hope to accomplish today is we hope to hear your comments. And today's receive and file, so there's opportunity through the city manager to engage us in ongoing conversations. The goal is for us to come back in June with an actual strategy that addresses exactly what you just said. You can't have too much outreach happening in the city at once. People get confused about what they're participating on. They are very expensive as well. So the grant funding process is one step. Not from a staffing perspective, like city staff perspective, but just logically. Engaging the community in a productive way where they're not confused by the multiple efforts that are happening. So if you were to ask me to, to say how many can move forward, I would say realistically two can move forward. One of the things that Steve will can talk about next, is he's the expert on this, is when can we get started? So the, the city is, why don't you start, start off with the, with the housing and the zoning?
Thanks, thanks, Adolfo. Yeah, so with these, as Adolfo said. The city, we're actually initiating a zoning code update, which was a requirement of the general plan. And you know that we've recently brought before you a housing element is also part of the general plan. We need to get started immediately on the zoning code update, specifically the stuff related to housing. Really, the rule of thumb is we want to get the zoning code done first because that. Provides the base zoning for mixed use. That provides all the basic regulations for the land that allows for mixed use and. And all current, our new residential standards, our new commercial standards and so forth. And then, as that process is completing, then we can begin work on the specific plans. And the specific plans, the way to think about a specific, a specific plan is layered on top of the zoning code. So it provides additional tools to help property owners. Realize the potential for their property and come up with something that's creative. In the same way that the Bolso Row project was a creative way of looking at what do we do with this, this former farm site? This former five acre site, create something innovative, something creative that adds value to the city. So the base zoning would need to come first and we're, we're starting that process. We have a consultant on board. It's already funded. You're going to see that rolling out over the next couple of months. And then, in the meantime, we could be planning for the specific plan, but we'll just have to wait till we get through most of the zoning code to initiate him.
And then, and that same momentum, I mean, for your second one, which I think it's a, a, a good item. For, and Little Saigon, the, the momentum behind the Bolso Row project. To be able to get, I mean, we already have the. Little Saigon Blueprint happening. And, you know, I think that would be a good way to. Keep that motivation going there in Little Saigon, hopefully get something done. So.
Part of the, part of the blueprint is to get out to the public, engage stakeholders and let them know about. This as well as other opportunities that are coming for Little Saigon.
Thank you.
Just add one more thing about the, the, the specific plan and the zoning. In order to remain competitive with adjacent jurisdictions, this is the type of work that has to happen so that developers look at our city. As something attractive and not something where they need to come in and do the zoning, do the specific plan. And then hopefully get a project approved. When adjacent jurisdictions have, are working to get all this in line. We need to be in line as well so that developers can come knocking on our door.
Yes, we need to create that excitement for, to attract development. So, very well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you both for your presentation.
I have one quick question.
Okay.
You know, I noticed when you're talking about the Little Saigon area and you take, you intentionally took out the two, the, all the mobile home parks in that area. Then on the Northwest Six, the area of the city along the 22 Gangrove Boulevard. There's a large community of mobile home parks and there's no mention of taking that thing out of the. Is there a reason for that?
That the difference between a city initiated and a private property initiated specific plan? I think that's the key there.
Yeah, it's a very good question. So a city initiated specific plan is one that, you know, the mayor and the council. Have authorized to be funded and authorized the staff to work with the consultant to prepare. The specific plan on behalf of the city, the same way we did with the Moran Street specific plan that was funded by the city. And it was done really at the time a decade ago to say. We as a city are willing to create this specific plan because we see the long-term economic value. Of setting in place these regulations and incentives for developers. It's exactly the approach we have with the Westminster Mall specific plan. We know that the mall has some challenging times ahead of it, the change in retail sales. So the city took initiative a couple of years ago and said, we're going to fund the Westminster Mall specific plan. The property owners, yes, will benefit from it, but certainly the city will benefit in the long term. But that's the city initiated specific plan approach. The. What's different about the Northwest District is that because that's owner, under one ownership. I, in our view, it really would not make sense for us to fund a city initiated. Specific plan when one property owner would, would benefit completely from everything that would happen. So we think that one of the reasons why that's a lower priority than these other areas of the city. Is that when that property owner is ready, then they can always come in and say, okay. We'd like to do something different with our property. And of course. They're allowed to do that. They can file a specific plan, but that would be a private property specific plan as opposed to one of the city initiated ones. Yeah, that's right.
Well, thank you very much. You know, I had, just want to make the comment. I mean, I've been to Westminster Mall many, many, many times. But looking in, from a Google Maps standpoint, it's a massive area and it's very important. Development for our city and we have to make sure that we do it right. Thank you.
I go ahead and move to receive and file this report. Second.
All right, we have the motion and second to approve this item.
Thank you, Mayor. And that motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo to receive and file this item. Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
I just want to say that I own, just for the record, I, I own a property along Westminster Boulevard. So it really is my intention not to be involved in the development of this specific plan in the area. And so I'm going to leave it up to staff and, and our, the consultant that it has hired. And so I just want to let everybody know that. So I don't know if I should be voting on this since it's just receive and file.
If you like, you recuse yourself.
Okay.
It's just receive and file, but yes.
Okay, I'll recuse myself.
Thank you. We'll have the record reflect that you have recused yourself. Councilmember Nguyen. Stepped up for a moment. Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you so much. Next item, 5.2 presentation by Shire Group. Corporation for Cannabis Retail. I like, I have to, to recuse myself because I proposed area in a presentation really. Close to my house. So Vice.
Thank you, Mayor.
So please.
Got it.
At a meeting.
Thank you. So we have a staff report and have the members of the Shrine Group?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. The, as you know, currently cannabis operations are not permitted or zoned for in our city. We have received a, a request by the Shrine Group. They've approached city staff regarding a potential project that they're interested. In developing within our city. And so we've allowed them to present this presentation and. And, and show us what they're, they're thinking about. And so staff at that point would like to have an open dialogue regarding. Whether we'd like to, you know, look into this type of an operation in our city. I'd like to introduce at this point, Toc Sado and Stephanie Uwi from the Shrine Group, who will make a presentation.
At this time, if we can switch over to PowerPoint presentation, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and Honorable City Council Members. My name is Toc Sado. I'm the president of the Shrine Group. I'm here with our VP of Government Relations, Stephanie Uwi. Thank you very much for taking the opportunity for us to introduce ourselves and our proposal to you. Next slide, please. We are an Asian and veteran-owned cannabis business. We're also the largest cannabis operator in California with 20 retail operations and over 2,800 employees. We had revenue in excess of $400 million in 2021. And, and we estimate approximately $700 million in 2022. We are vertically integrated, meaning that we cultivate our own flower and we sell our own flower at our stores. Next slide, please. This is a list of our stores. And as you can see, we have nine stores in Southern California. Downtown LA, Pomona, Two in San Bernardino, Old Mar. Mendez, Marina Valley, Palm Desert and Vista and Yerupa Valley. And at those nine stores, we average $27 million per store, which is more than nine times the state average. And the reason for that is because we have the number one brand in California called Stizzy. Next slide, please. We're also the number one taxpayer in the state of California. This chart only shows what we paid in the Q4 of 2021. So please multiply that number by four to get an annualized rate. We are also paid $120 million in state cannabis taxes alone in 2021, which is number one in California. Next slide, please. At any location in, in Westminster, we believe we can average around $35 million our first year. The reason for this is this will be our flagship location in Orange County. And because where Westminster is situated. Next to the 22 Highway and the 405 Highway, we believe we can attract a lot of business from our avid fans from Huntington Beach. Seal Beach, Fountain Valley, Garden Grove, and all the neighboring cities up and down the 405. Assuming a tax rate of 6%, which is the state average for city cannabis taxes. This would generate $2.1 million in 2020, our first year. And typically we have about a 4% increase in revenue in our second year. So assuming 36 and a half million dollars of second year. We would have $2.2 million in year two in tax revenue for the city and $2.265 million in city cannabis taxes in year three. Next slide, please. We have a signed letter of intent to lease the building at 14191 Beach Boulevard. Which is the happy to easy mattress location across the street. It is a very large location at 6,400 square feet, making it about twice as large as our average location. That's 24 dedicated parking spots. And because of the proximity to the freeways and its massive size. And the dedicated parking spots, we are confident that we can serve up to 900 customers per day. And do around $35 million in revenue. Next slide, please. As you can see, this is a conceptual rendering of our store. It'll be very clean, modern and sleek. And as you can see, we will not have any signage or any words that have cannabis. To ensure that no kids or anyone else that is not interested in cannabis only sees this as another high-end retail store. We also want to make sure to work with city council and the rest of staff to make sure. That the design and the look of the building fits in with the rest of the neighborhood. I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
In addition to, in addition to the rendering, I wanted to show some photos of what some of our stores actually look like. On the left of the screen, you'll see our Yerupa Valley location. And on the right of the screen, you'll see our Union Square location in the city of San Francisco. Yerupa Valley is a more suburban and residential community. So the exterior is clean, minimalist, and the windows are tinted. In contrast, on the right, Union Square is a much more urban and busy commercial center. This location has a more of an urban feel. In the windows, through the windows, you can see artwork displayed. We will work with the city and go out of our way to make sure that our location fits the. Community planning standards and the character of the surrounding community. On this slide, you'll see photos of the interior of our stores. And our stores have been mentioned in the media and magazines such as Forbes and the Los Angeles Times for a very sleek, modern, bright. And visually appealing look. The main feature of the interior of our stores are the glass cabinets. All products are securely locked behind the glass cabinets so that no customer can touch or handle any of the product. Until it is purchased at our registers. Under each register, we have a panic button installed so that any of our staff can call. The police immediately if they feel threatened or if there is any threat of, of robbery. However, despite being the largest retailer in the state of California with over 20 retail stores. We have had absolutely zero instances of theft or robberies. And this is because we always have two to five security guards at our locations during all operational hours. And we have at least one security guard overnight to watch and protect our facility. Our stores are blanketed by exterior and interior high-definition cameras that are professionally installed. And they give visibility to every, every single location in our stores, especially those with locations with cannabis products. Or entrance and exits where customers can go in and out. At our proposed location, we will have 46 cameras. And again, we have. Panic buttons under each of the cash registers to make sure that if needed, we're able to call. Call the local law enforcement immediately. We also have a very strict ID check policy. A customer will have their ID checked three times. One at the, at the outside of a facility by security guard, inside in the lobby by a check-in associate. And lastly, prior to purchase at the register. An emerging industry such as cannabis, the best way to secure safety for the community and our customers. Is to ensure that our workers feel safe and they're taken care of. And so we have entered into a global community benefits agreement. With United Food and Commercial Workers, or the UFCW. And it provides safe and clean workplace conditions, holidays, competitive wages, and regular wage increases for our employees. In addition to the living wage that starts at 1750 and goes up to 2,450. We provide full medical, dental benefits for, for our employees as well as employer-funded pension plan. Out of our proposed Westminster location, we will employ, we will employ 40 to 45 employees. Most of whom will be Westminster residents. We truly believe in hiring locally. In addition, we will offer workforce development classes taught by college instructors. Students who complete these classes will receive college credit that can be transferred to any California college. It is our priority to support our employees and set them up for success now and in the future. And with that, that concludes our presentation. Thank you so much for your time and I'd like to open up for any questions you may have.
Thank you. I had some questions. I don't know if council, does any council have any questions? No, you do? I'll go then. Well, you answered one of my questions. My question was local jobs. Was you said 40 to 45 local jobs, which that's also a plus. And I guess I, I would like to go back to that slide of potential revenue, tax revenue. So I mean, that, that, that really caught my eye. I mean, I guess, I don't know, this question is, I guess, mainly more for staff. Do we know? Currently, who is? From one source, our highest. Tax revenue, maybe I'm thinking guessing Walmart? I don't know. That would be a narrow question. But. Do you know what the revenue is? Okay. Yes. Okay, I got it. Thanks. No, I just, you answered a lot of my questions. You had a really detailed presentation. The questions I had was on security. You mentioned security. I'm surprised, zero for how many stories you have?
Yes, and one of the main differentiators between our stores and the others, as Stephanie mentioned, is that all our products are kept behind glass cabinets. It's kind of like walking into the jewelry section at Tiffany's or the Nordstrom's. And so compared to a lot of other operators who had them out in the open, like Whole Foods, the style of Whole Foods, it's called the pick-and-go. Ours is all behind glass cabinets, and the customers are not actually able to to touch the products until they purchase it. And so the only way they were able to actually steal our products, break the glass, obviously, which would apprise the two or three security guards we always have on site. And so that is the reason for our truly remarkable record of zero thefts.
Do you happen to have any, I don't know if you do, any numbers? I mean, you said you mentioned 900 customers. What was it, a month?
900 customers a day. Yeah, so.
The numbers that I'm asking you, do you have any numbers as far as since you generate that much traffic? Is there any information as far as surrounding businesses and what those customers can possibly bring to neighboring other surrounding businesses? You know, since there's that much traffic coming in and out?
Sure, yes. So we've, just anecdotally, we've basically every single business in every single city that we've entered, or every city we've entered into, the pizza parlors, the barber shops, the Big Five, all the stores that we are in proximity of 100 to 250 feet have let us know that they have seen an increased extreme uptick in customers, so much foot traffic. And that's another reason why we also try to pick a location with ample parking and dedicated parking, because we do see quite a bit of customer traffic. But if it's managed in the right way, it can be a really huge boon for the surrounding businesses.
Thank you. Yeah, I see that too as well. Like I said, it was very detailed presentations. Thank you very much for bringing this to us. I think it's something that we should consider. I'll just wait for council, any more council questions?
I have questions for. Have you ever taken any steps to survey or, you know, the criminal statistic before and after the opening of their store?
So I can tell you that, for example, in downtown Los Angeles, I can just give you anecdotal evidence. We haven't done a deep dive. But that Los An, we are actually located in a not-so-great area on 728 East Commercial. It's a very industrial area with a lot of homeless people in the surrounding area. But what I can tell you is that the Los Angeles PD has let us know that crime within a 500-foot radius of our store has basically plummeted. There has been some petty theft and burglaries of people breaking into cars. But as far as violent crime, the area around the 550-feet, 500-feet radius around our downtown Los Angeles store and all of our other stores really have really declined. And that's due to the fact that we have, each of our stores has at least one security guard overnight that mans the area and that patrols the area. We also have around 25 to 30 cameras on the exterior to make sure that no illegal activity is happening outside of our facility. And third, even during the day and at night, we have a security guard, an extra security guard that conducts a perimeter walk around not only our store but around 300 to 500-feet area around our store to make sure there's no loitering and there's no illegal use of our products on the streets. And so with that comprehensive security system, we have seen every police department that I've been in touch with has let us know in Pomona, for example, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Davis, they've all let me know that crime has dropped precipitously around that area.
Anyone else? Questions? No? All right, thank you. Let me see, we have no more questions? I'd actually like to make a comment as far as the state of our city, you know, along with many other cities, you know. Cities suffered, you know, economic difficulties with, you know, COVID-19. But for our city, we have our measure SS sunsetting. And I think we owe it to our residents to look for new revenue streams. And many cities are churning to cannabis to make up for their budget shortfalls. So we can't afford to stand idle. We must do what we can to infuse our city with much-needed revenue. I don't know if we want to get back into the horror show that we witnessed with our staff presented us the possibility, what would happen with the loss of Measure SS. I mean, if nobody got frightened, then I don't know what you were looking at. So we owe it to our residents to do what we can. And I would like to see us move forward with the possibility of adding, allowing this cannabis use in our city. So I will make a motion to our staff to move on to the next step to allow for us to change our municipal code for cannabis use. And that's a motion.
You know, at this point, the motion is a receivable file, so.
But is that where we are?
Yes.
So.
receivable.
So the present, the receiving file, obviously, the council can provide direction. I know this is a very, you know, this is a contentious item, of course. But there are, you know, there are, as we're looking toward, you know, moving forward with our finances and trying to find additional sources for revenue, it's definitely a worthwhile conversation for us to have regarding this type of a project. So that being said, you know, I understand that maybe some of you have some questions before you make any kind of determination as to whether this is something that you want to do. Obviously, you know, other cities that have this type of operation, they have, you know, they have different ways of regulating this type of business. And so we're not even at that process. We don't even know how we would regulate this type of business. How many would allow, you know, how many would we allow? And then within, you know, how many feet of each other, within how many feet of, you know, certain areas? We're not at that point yet. Right now, this is very preliminary as far as trying to gauge the interest in this council, if you're even remotely interested in entertaining the idea of allowing this type of business. But that being said, you know, if you have any questions, additional research that you would like us to conduct to help you make an informed and educated decision as to what you would like to do, this would be the time for that. You know, and that would still be part of this process of moving forward.
So we, I mean, we're not reinventing the wheel. We have models, other cities, that we can look towards what they're doing, correct?
We can definitely come back. So based on a couple of the comments that have been presented tonight, we can look at, we can look at statistics, you know, crimes, for example, in locations in other cities to see before and after crimes. Those are, that is public record that we can certainly, you know, look at if you're interested in looking at some of our surrounding, you know, benchmark cities that allow this type of operation. That's one area. The second part is we can look at other cities to see what type of regulations they have as far as allowing this type of business, how many, you know. I know some cities do a lottery system. That does not seem to be effective in many areas. You know, and we can always present that as well for you to consider. You know, we can definitely, you know, bring back what a potential, you know, like basically what the vision would look like for, you know, for this type of operation. Any other questions that you, you know, you may have? Is there, you know, is this, you know, is a retail location something that maybe you're interested in? Maybe you want to go bigger and have distribution? I don't know. But they are all, you know, all valid questions that, you know, we can help find answers to.
Well, can you, yeah, I, that's, I think there's a good questions. I think we need to move forward and have you bring back all the research that you're talking about, give us more information.
So I just want to stress tonight, I'm not, we're staff, and we are not asking for you to say, yes, you want to have a dispensary or, you know, or retail, rather.
I just think that we, the state of our city we're in, we can't afford not to. We can't thumb our nose to this, to any potential revenue. We can't afford it.
Which is, which is why, which is why the Shrine Group has, you know, that's why they're here tonight. They are, you know, they are, unlike some of the, some of our surrounding cities that have the smaller mom-and-pop type operations, this is actually a full-blown legitimate company that will, you know, provide this type of retail. So we felt that this would be a good, a good icebreaker for this conversation. So that being said, you know, like, again, if staff can definitely move forward with bringing back analyses of anything that you would, you know, you would like us to look into. But again, that would be direction that you would be providing the staff tonight along with the receivable file of the presentation.
Well, I move to have staff bring us back that information you were speaking about and receivable file.
I'd like to make a comment real quick. You know, we suddenly, we need to generate funding, new funding for the city since the SS measure is going to be sunset in November. This is a very controversial products issue. Suddenly, we need to, number one, we need to fact-check. All the issue was addressed in terms of public safety, that your companies claim that crimes has been reduced and you have an effective way to deal with lawyering and keeping the potential problem from happening. So we certainly, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of homeworks that we have to, have to be done. Lots of research, a lot of work. So certainly, yes, we do need legal, some new source of funding, but we do not want to rush into anything. It's a, and right now, it is boring. It's, it could be very controversial to somebody, council member, to agree, for whatever reason. But suddenly, we need to do a lot of homeworks, a fact-check and figure out how we're going to regulate, just like a city manager, which I mentioned.
Yes.
We need to figure out how to effectively regulate and make sure that everybody happy.
Is there, I mean, I know I spoke into, I think our police chief, maybe he can weigh in. I know on this, on this issue, as far as, I know our, we have some staffing issues as far as, you know, our police department is concerned. Chief, I mean, can you weigh in on this as far as, like, on a standpoint of the police department and maybe any potential issues that you see?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I would need to see the statistics and the data of the places that this organization currently runs and analyze that before I would be able to run in. Certainly, there are some organizations that might not be well-run, that crime rates go up and there's more police services and resources needed. And then there's others that seem to put measures in place that greatly reduce police resources being needed. So I would actually have to contact the police departments in their jurisdictions where they own businesses and get that data from them and then analyze that. And I certainly will if that's your direction.
Yeah, can you work with the city manager and probably bring us back some that information as well?
Yes.
Appreciate it.
May I speak? Okay, so here we are. This is probably our first presentation relating to cannabis, retail cannabis, correct? If my memory serves me correctly, yes. So, you know, I, we are in a vulnerable position. And I hear, like, okay, we need money, so we're going to go sell cannabis. Cannabis, like, okay, we need money, so we're going to go sell cannabis. So that's just, I do agree with Councilman Doe that we are not to rush into it. I appreciate your presentation. I learned about your company, and that's all good. But we need to learn about the industry. I think we owe it to our constituents to look, you know, to weigh both sides. And I think we need, we're barely scratching the surface of our research. And I don't think we've even started yet. So I am hoping you're not asking for any, any votes tonight, except for receivable file, which is fine. Duly noted that, yes, you know, you know, I love to, I love that presentation about your company and all that. But we do need, for ourselves in-house, we need to do a lot of vetting, a lot of due diligence, a lot of research so that we can thoroughly understand the industry, understand the different companies, and the wants and the needs of our constituents, of our community. And so much to look into. So I think we have to do the right thing. We cannot just say, yes, we need money, and this is what I hear. We need money, and so therefore, we're going to, you know, approve this. And no, we are going to do the right thing. We are always going to go through a vetting process and do our research, do our due diligence, and then come back. I appreciate your time, Shrine Group, and well.
Thank you very much.
I second receivable file.
We have a. Was there a motion to receivable file?
There was a motion.
There was a motion to receivable file and then analyze everything that we had talked about.
Bring it back.
Okay, bring it back?
Yeah, to bring, to bring back items that were analyzed.
Is that forsaken to that motion?
Not yet.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Seconded, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
And again, let me just clarify, bringing it back would just mean to bring information back to the council. There's no decision, no decision being made. This is, provide more information to the council.
Provide more information, more research. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So that motion was made by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by Councilmember Ho to receivable file this presentation and bring back with additional analysis. Vice, excuse me, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen? Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor, motion carries 4-0 with Mayor Ta recusing himself.
With this motion, we can bring Mayor. Thanks, Vice Mayor, for sharing the item. I appreciate that. All right, so next item, discussion on the city ban on short-term rental. All right, so do we need a staff report, or a city council?
So this was a request from Councilmember Doe regarding the possibility of allowing short-term rentals. And so we currently do, we currently do not allow for short-term rentals. And so Councilmember Doe has requested an item for this discussion, potentially to look at whether we can generate additional revenue for it and to regulate the, you know, to regulate what short-term rentals, like how they're, you know, how they're being, how they're being used if we were to allow them.
Thank you very much, and Vice Mayor Manager. You know, the reason I bring this issue back to the city council for discussions is basically I have been contacted by a lot of constituents in the city as well as investors, real estate investor, who have property in our city. And they're asking before and after the January 22nd, 2020, council decision to effectively ban all the short-term rentals. During that particular city council meeting, I voiced my concern. Basically, we should not completely ban the short-term rental. It's not just Airbnb, short-term rental, anything that's any property that can be rented out less than 30 days. Basically, I propose during discussions that we should regulate license, inspect, and regulate these particular short-term rentals. So basically, we have a set regulation that you can, you have so many complaints in a certain timeframe. If not, we're going to shut down your permit. You can not effectively rent your property out in the short term basics. I have listened to all the public comment regarding to the short term rental. It's, it's creating, bringing disturbance crimes, gambling and those basically the hearsay information, maybe there's some truth to it. I personally, and travel and I stay at Airbnb throughout the country. I went to bury my sister in, in Detroit and we, our family from across the country, California, Texas, Alabama, flew over in, in town and we ran Airbnb and we, we stayed there. My, when my son got married last year and my nephew got married recently, our families could not find a Airbnb or a house in this area to stay. And they have to go to a city like Anaheim and rent a, a big house so that we can have a gathering. And that's very unfortunate. So that's why I bring this issue back to the, to the city council to have a discussion whether or not we should revisit this issue. Basically, we could bring, allow short term rentals to regulate license and inspect these rental property and that will help generate some revenue to, for the city and bet tax. So with that, I give the floor to the council for discussions.
Yeah, one of the thanks, Councilmember Doe for bringing it up. So all the members of the council, we have opportunity to discuss regarding short term rental or we can call it Airbnb. And I also receive a lot of concerns from a lot of people who live in our city. They concerns, they have a concerns, not, you know, if we have Airbnb, you know. So the concerns about the parking, concerns about, you know, how many new people moving to, move to the neighborhood and, you know, a lot of concerns like noise, you know, there are many, many concerns in different neighborhood. That's the reason why a few years ago, the city council, we decide to, we decide to initiate a resolution to ban it. So I honestly, I don't see a potential revenue because we don't really have any, any study, any results about what revenue we're going to bring into the city. And if we allow Airbnb, I mean, like, do we have enough police officer? If, you know, there are many call from a lot of homeowner who live in different neighborhoods. So I'm not really sure because we don't, we don't, we don't have a number. We didn't do any study. So anyway, that is my, that is my opinion, so.
I have a question for staff. I don't know that you have a chance to do the homework. Our 34 cities in the Orange County, how many, how many of them are allowed to have a short term rental?
So we have not done the homework for it at this juncture, but that's where if you're remotely interested in further analysis, we can do the homework.
And my understanding is a lot of cities around, surrounding us here, they, they are not allowing, including the city of Anaheim that Councilmember Doe just mentioned. I believe city of Anaheim banned short term rental. So I don't know where you get that information, but the city of Anaheim, I understand that they, they do not allow short term rental.
So we actually have our planning manager here who, if by memory, can maybe respond to that. If you remember the surrounding cities, what the bans were, I know the report was a while ago, but, you know, off the top of your head.
Cities to find out, what if we call them and gather some data?
I have a comment. I don't know if Councilmember Nguyen is doing. Apparently, yeah, I remember that meeting. I was watching it on TV. I don't know, I think I was here. Yeah, there was a lady, I don't know who was she was representing at the time, that she wasn't aware that she found out late that that was on the council agenda. And she, I don't think she got an opportunity to really give us, give the council information at that time. I think she might have been working for Airbnb or one of those companies. And I thought it was just that council should have taken the time to, to gather as much information possible before deciding whether one way or the other. And at this point, I think we need more information from staff, possible revenue. I mean, and how do you, how do you monitor? How do you collect, you know, the tax? You know, then also the possible negative impacts. Because I mean, some of these stories are kind of, you know, could it happen? Yeah, I mean, somebody said about brings gambling. I mean, I don't know about that, but I mean, that can happen. That's happening in our city right now and many places. If you just read our, the police report, so it doesn't take Airbnb to get that done. But I think at this point, we just need more info to, to see which way to go. But, you know, if, in, if it is, you know, a possible revenue, how much? And is that, is that number worth? If there is a negative impact, is that number worth it? You know, there's a lot of things to, to consider. So at this point, I would like to have staff just bring us back, you know, ta, tax revenue info, possible tax revenue info, info. And also from what I understand, and this is what I don't get, is that I heard a number of 140 current Airbnbs running in our city now. It's like, why do we have that many? And who's monitoring, who's not monitoring and why aren't they being shut down? If that's what's happening, you know, that they're, they're, they're conducting business and we're not getting any money out of it. And I'm sure if they are, and if they are conducting a, a business and are they negatively impacting their, their community? We don't know. Why don't, why don't we find out? I think we need to get court enforcement in on that to find out where they are and, you know, currently they're, they're banned, so why aren't they being stopped? But there's a lot of info that needs to, that this council needs. I think we need to bring it back. I can say that there's, there are companies that cities can pay that do all the monitoring to find the illegal ones and help identify them because there are ones out there that operate. Such, but yeah, so there probably are ones that are operating. But I don't, I don't know if we need to hire a company to find them. I think a lot of these companies are advertising. If somebody wants to find them, you just, you know, Google them or go on. I don't know where they advertise Craigslist. I mean, I don't know what they're advertised, but they're, they're out there. If you want to find them, you'll find them.
Yeah, we got, we gotta be careful not to Airbnb advertising short term rentals, you know, B R O and.
Yeah, whatever they are.
Other sources, Craigslist and all that stuff, so.
Was there?
May I speak?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, finish.
So was.
I'm going to make a motion to bring back more info, what we just spoke about.
Vice Mayor, you know, I'm not sure that you're willing to modify your motion that we wait for the staff, you know, to do a complete study.
That's what I'm asking for.
Not like rush, like.
No.
Come back another two weeks. I don't think our staff have enough time, so please, you know.
Whatever the staff, is staff.
Really complete a study and I need our city staff to compare to many other city. As all the surrounding city, you know, like Garden Row, they banned it. I think Fine Valley, they banned it. I don't think city, San Ana, they have it either, right?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
Yeah, so they banned it. So many, many cities surrounding us, they banned and they don't have it. So why we have it? Because we don't have, we right now, we don't have the answer of how much revenue that we would to bring into our city if we allow that happen in the city. And if that happen, you know, are we ready? Our police officer, I think we all understand, they understand, yeah.
Oh yes, what I was, that's what I said. I said exactly that, that we don't know, that we need to find out.
So I believe that your motion is to have staff bring it back.
Yeah, just bring us back information as, you know, potential revenue, how to monitor, negative impacts, you know, all that stuff, you know.
So do we have to second on that before I, I make a substitute motion?
Well, I'm going to speak first if you don't mind.
Okay.
Or you vote. Okay, so as you know, Airbnb is not the only short term rental company, so VRBO is the other. So we're just going to call it short term rentals. And so some of the things, I don't know, last year was so long ago. Maybe it was maybe a year and a half, two years ago when we voted on this, right? So I'm not going to say I remember why or how we deliberated, how we came to conclusion and how we voted. But I, I know we did not agree on, we did not vote on having short term rental, anything less than 30 days in our city. So, and I'm, I'm okay with revisiting the subject matter. I asked that, well, you know, when I did just rough research, you know, it, it, it shows that it affects the housing costs for the local and, you know, because of supply and demand. So basically, you know, the, as you know, when renters come in, they are going to rent at premium dollars. So our renters, our local renters are going to be competing with these short term rentals, renters. So therefore it's going to drive, drive up the price. And, you know, because the demand for, 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 for rentals are going to be lower. So I want to really know how it's going to affect local renters. I mean, as it is, you know, it is getting very expensive to live in our city. And so how does that short term rental is going to affect the cost of their, their cost of living, the cost of renting? And number two is how it affects our community just from a non-financial point of view. So anything for non-financial. So the police, how, how does that affect? I believe, you know, short term rental has been around for at least 10 years. It's been, you know, very popular in many cities. And so you're going to find a lot of data that's going to support, you know, for what we're looking for. So anything relating to how it affects the community positively and negatively. And I, and especially when it comes to safety for our community. Okay, and, and then I want to know how it affects our hotels. We understand and I know that Anaheim did have Airbnb at one point. They grandfathered over 200 Airbnb or short term renters licenses. And so they since then have put a stop to that. There, you know, being that they are our neighbors, you can certainly and easily find out why. And I know that their T O T taxes is, is huge. It's like 17%. It's, you know, twice as much as ours. Ours only 8% or eight and a half, something like that. So here they are, there must be a reason. And so, I mean, you don't want to, some of these things, you can just ask your neighbors, you know, and they are, they, they did the research. And so maybe they can hand over to you the research. And then, so I want to know how it affects our hotels. And, and then what, what do we have to gain in terms of T O T tax? And then what are they, and if you look at the ones, the cities that are allowing short term rentals right now, how do they capture the T O T tax? Like, how do they administer? How do they account? How do they retrieve and how, you know, et cetera? So you know what I mean? Do they, I mean, it's, it's fine to say, hey, you know, let's just give, do short term rentals and then you're not, and if you don't have the infrastructure in place and if you rush anything, just like the subject matter earlier, and I said, you know, if we rush something later on, we're going to see, we might fall flat on our face and then we have to reverse it. So rather than doing that, let's just make sure we have everything on the table. I don't mind revisiting the subject matter. And, you know, I know many people want to make money. But remember, we also have to make sure we look, capture the T O T tax. That's hard. It's harder than you think. And so I think the easiest way, like I said, is that many cities have, I mean, it's already been 10 years and it's, many cities are just as many, I'm, I'm sure, are doing short term rentals, just as many that are not. So there are some that are switching from yes to no and find out why. And then go to the ones that are doing Airbnb right now and, and ask how their, what are their policies? And who is, do they hire a company or, or what method are they using to capture the T O T tax? Because the last thing you want is that you lose out on the T O T tax, you know, paid by the hotels and you thinking that you're going to get more T O T tax with short term rentals, but you end up not. So then what happens then? I mean, I don't make mistakes like that. So I mean, I'm telling you some of the things that are from the top of my head for you to, you know, follow through and do some research.
So, Councilmember Nguyen? You want to say something?
So we, well, if there, there was, was an emotion on the floor, on the floor, then I go ahead and make motion that, no.
There is a motion.
There's a motion, but no second. So unless there's a second, it'll die.
Second the motion.
Nobody seconded the motion.
Nobody seconded the motion.
So if there's no second, it'll die and then you can make.
Okay, so I can make a motion right now.
Who, who make the motion?
I made the motion to bring back info, to bring us back this information we're speaking.
No, I, I would like to make a comment. I'd like to second the motion. I'd like to make a comment real quick. And before Councilmember Nguyen can make a substitute motion, if that okay? You know, we, we're talking about short term rental here, you know, like our family, when we travel, we have a family gathering. We want an Airbnb or a, a short term rental residence so that we can stay together. And we will find one and we don't care where it is. So it doesn't matter if, if there, any city banned the short term rental. We will figure out way and we're willing to go where they allow the short term rental to stay there. So we can have a chance to stay together in a house as a family reunion. We're not competing with a short term rental, you know, they're not compete with single room hotel and hotel hospitality industry. So it's, it's, it's an apple and oranges that we're comparing here. But at the same time, not too many people who have property and they want to rent it out to be able to pay for their mortgage. They don't want any problem. They do whatever they can to make sure that they have good clientele that, that pay for the rental, so help them to pay for the mortgage. So, you know, thi, this is not my item completely. We'd like to bring it back for discussion so that, you know, all the issue that all the council member brought up was very legitimate. It's, I'm not saying that's wrong. So we didn't do more research, we will be able to effectively allow this and regulate this and to make sure that this is something that's, that doesn't affect the safety to affect, become the burden to the, to our police department. And it's, at the same time, when we regulate and inspect and license these property, it's, it's provide a better place for people to come and rent. Because otherwise they're going to have underground rental going on right now and we unable to. Uh, because otherwise, they're gonna have underground um, uh, rental going on right now and we unable to regulate. Thank you.
I want to provide my input before I make a motion. Uh, first of all, I know that not so long ago, probably a year ago, we have this item up for discussion and it's been, you know, we spent time, I'm pretty sure that we spent uh, plenty of time to talk about it. And then we pass it with honoris that we ban the short-term rental. To answer councilmember Ho um, question that, you know, the cost, uh, my understanding is the cost, if we have the short-term rental, um, they, they can make a lot of monies out of um, Airbnb. Yeah, compared to the rent, um, rent. And we know that there is a shortage in our uh, city that we don't have enough um, housing for the, the people to rent and live here. And, you know, and the cost drive driven up, they are not going to rent the house out to the people, but they are going to make it into the Airbnb. Um, I have, I have properties uh, in Westminster. I know uh, what have to deal with. And also talking about T O T, the transient tax, um, you know, we can't control, and I don't know whether that we have a process of controlling Airbnb tax, uh, transient tax or not. But we know for sure that if they are going out to the local business here, which is the, the hotels, which we encourage them to have more hotels and, 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 you know, business here in the city of Westminster, then we can for sure that we will collect tax, transient tax from them. Uh, from the neighborhood standpoint, I know that you heard it from the uh, people here today, tonight, that, you know, nobody wants to have people coming in and out of a neighborhood, you know, uh, day in, day out, and you don't know who they are. Um, you know, uh, uh, certainly I don't want that and I know that a lot of people don't want that. Um, but not to mention that um, you know, they may rent the house for a weekend or for a few days so that they can have a party. You know, so let's say that in your neighborhood, if you have like a month that you have four weeks or two weeks like that, I'm pretty sure that people will, will, will get upset about it. The, and, you know, a number of cars to the police is going to be placed and then, you know, here we are creating more works to that. So um, with that, I think that um, I, I will, I will make a motion of taking no action today. Because we are going to keep the status quo of what we already uh, voted for about a year ago, a year or two ago.
Yes, so I like to second that uh, uh, substitute motion because I believe that if we uh, allow uh, to have short-term rental in our city, I mean, like um, I'm not really sure that uh, we have enough uh, officer to receive the call. And right now, we don't know how much of revenue uh, that we're going to bring in the city. Uh, T O C, we have that in our hand. We could able to expect how much we receive annually. But for the income, for the revenue from short-term rental, we don't really know. So we cannot allow something that we don't really know. I'd rather keep something that in our hands. So I, that's the reason why I second the substitute motion from councilmember Nguyen.
Mayor, can I make it just a quick comment?
Please.
Um, yeah, I, I, a lot of the things you were saying, I agree with, but that's why we're asking for more info because we don't know. And at this moment, I am not saying that I'm for it or against it because we, there's a lot of stuff that we don't know, so I can't say in one way or other without having all this information in front of me. I mean, you just said that we don't know, so there goes, that's, that's exactly it, that we don't know. And I, and I feel that we, when this came to the council, I think it was two, three years ago, that was the case then that we didn't know and just made a decision of just banning it. I think that we need to find out more information as far as the issues that you, you spoke about, that councilmember uh, Nguyen spoke about, that we do need to, we're not at, we're not right now, currently, we're not saying that we're, we, we're for it or against it, we're just saying we need more info. That's all we're saying. Just one more. Because I don't know if I'm for it. I just, I don't, I don't know.
Just one more short comment uh, before we vote. I think that we spent so much time on that already. The reason I said no action is because we, if we take it back or have the staff to look into that, we have much more important things to look into and staff is, you know, overwhelmed at this point. Uh, I don't see, and, you know, the point of getting that, you know, having staff to go and do the homework and then bring it back and, you know, spent hours to discuss on this again. Uh, that's my, um, that's my thing.
Mayor, if I, if I may.
Please, please.
Comment on, on the process of this. Um, so realistically, because we are moving forward with, you know, some really heavy items in the near future, you know, including our budget, et cetera, and the fact that we have um, lack of staffing. Um, additional research for this will take some time, especially if we're looking at analyzing the T O T. Um, realistically, we would probably have to contract out or um, get some consulting services, financial consulting services to assess the tax portion of it. Um, because I, I, I don't, I don't believe that we, you know, we have the resources um, to be, to provide something back to you reasonably without um, being able to do that. So I just wanted to preface that.
All right, I appreciate that, so uh.
Let me say, let me say this, may I? Okay, so um, I'm at this time, I have not changed my mind, so I would say no to um, short-term rentals still. And um, the one thing that I do want though is to have uh, staff bring back. I don't wanna have a consultant and, and go out and get a consultant at this time because that'll be costly. But you can take your time, you know, and I think some preliminary uh, studies by you and your, and your finance staff, um, some information that you could get online or maybe just by talking to your neighbors, your others. So I would say some preliminary um, investigation, if you will, or, you know, just research will be fine. Um, and, and you don't have to rush it, you know? And so I would say, I, you know, it's no at this time, but then please bring back more information. And I think we, there's plenty of information for us to go by because um, you know, uh, short-term rental's been prevalent for ten years now at least. So um, I think we could do, we could just go by what, what you find on, on the internet, plus talking to others, uh, you know, in the, in, in other cities that you have a relationship with. Um, I think I would be real happy with that and then if um, will you bring that back and if we find that there's a need for us to look into it further, we need uh, an expert, uh, consultant, you know, on the T O T, whatnot, and, you know, analyze all that, then at that time, we could decide as a, as a council to, to retain someone, but I wouldn't do that, you know?
Yeah, I agree. That's, that sounds, that sounds reasonable. I mean, the only, the reason that I ma- mentioned what I, what I did about more information is because we're speaking about finding new revenue and using your imagination of, to, you know, to uh, for our city to generate new revenue, it's uh, it's going with that spirit, you know, that spirit that we're trying to do as a council, do what we can, you know, for our residents to, to have an open mind. Like I said, I'm not, we, uh, and a personal note, uh, on my street over from where I live, there was a, an uh, a short-term rental there and there was a time, there was one weekend where there was um, a young, young people who had rented it and they were playing basketball till like one o'clock or two o'clock in the morning and the police were called. Yeah, but again, I owe it to the residents to have an open mind.
Yes.
So I'm, if I were to take my personal view on it and what happened in my neighborhood, I would say no, because this is very disruptive, but I can't put, put myself ahead of the residents. I gotta have an open mind. Is, is, is it worth it? Is, you know what I mean? Is it worth it for us to even look at it? And I agree and I don't want us to spend um, m- money on, on hiring a consultant. I think we can just do some, staff can just talk about, so, yeah.
Yes, and I appreciate that because I know at the last meeting, I did ask for everybody to just bring your crev- creativity and, and, you know, be open-minded. And that's why I am going with you, I'm voting with you and that I am not making a change today. But I am okay with bringing, uh, asking staff to bring back information and please to uh, prioritize accordingly, whatever you think is important to you. Those should go first and, and then this is something that can wait and it should and it will wait um, so that we can have more data and then perhaps uh, we, you know, we'll look into it and that'll be a very good step to take. I think that's a very positive uh, thing to do.
May I make a comment in response to uh, councilwoman Kim Lee Ho's comment? I, I totally agree with you, uh, not spending any money to analyze the T O T because it's uh, and thank you for the interim city manager, Christian Corden, bringing that up to the council because I know that's a huge amount of work for staff and in order to get to the bottom of that, you, you know, you're right, we have to hire a consultant. And certainly, at this point, we do not want to spend any money on that. Um, that, you know, we are talking about bringing revenue to the city and we are doing nothing. When we ban this, what does that mean? Is zero revenue for the city? Zero. When you, you don't ask for anything, the answer is always no. So I'm not, I'm, I'm, the reason I bring this one up so uh, so that the council have a chance to have a dialogue to reconsider what, what decision we're making in the past. And um, and we understand that this, uh, this is a potential issue. It's, I'm not asking everybody to, the council to rush in and, and, and approve and change it. We need to figure out way to regulate. And for those who own, uh, property owner, they need to uh, figure out way effectively screening these uh, potential uh, tenants, uh, to make sure that it's not gonna create a problem uh, and causing a burden to our uh, city police department. And uh, that's why we uh, we need to have um, just very basic, you know, contact the surround city who uh, which allow um, short-term rental and ask for, hey, you have a policy for uh, short-term rental. It's just pretty much, I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So it's uh, I, I cannot say it's a simple process, but it's a, it need to be done so that at least the council have a better um, work picture of the potential issue, you know, risk management, to figure out whether or not it's gonna be um, uh, worthwhile to allow Airbnb. Because like I say, uh, it's not competing with the local hotel, single room. When I travel, have a family with me, I don't care where it is. Ten mile, twenty mile a- away from where I wanna be, and we will want to stay together, we'll, we'll, we'll go out and uh, find a uh, short-term rental property big enough to accommodate all of us. Uh, we will not, you know, we don't wanna go to the ten-room in a hotel. That certainly, that, that's, so we're not, uh, and, and the way, I totally appreciate the comment from the people representing the hotel industry. You're not wrong, okay? We hear you. Uh, we're not, we're not uh, trying to um, destroy your business. But um, we just wanna provide um, people option. This is America. I mean, you know, um, we want to regulate and just to make sure that everybody have equal chance to become successful and that's it. So uh, thank you.
Yes, so I think we have a substitute motion and seconded on the floor. I believe there is no right or wrong about this uh, you know, item. Uh, I think that I appreciate all councilmember, you know, for your uh, uh, comment. I think that, uh, you know, some of you want to provide opportunity to uh, look into it. But from my point of view, I, I think our city staff, I, even our city staff, you know, uh, have to look into it. It go to spend a lot of, have to spend a lot of time, so I, so we stand where I believe. So we have the mo- substitute motion and second on the floor.
Thank you, mayor. So at this time, the motion was made by councilmember Nguyen, seconded by mayor Ta. And the substitute motion was to take no action at this time. Councilmember Do.
So I very disagree with uh, his motion, yet above no, is that correct? No, no.
Councilmember Ho. Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
No.
Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion fails.
All right, so substitute motion fail, we go back to original motion.
And the ma- the motion was for staff to provide uh, additional information. Um, that motion was made by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by councilmember Do. Councilmember Do.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
For the record, I still say no to short-term Airbnb, uh, short-term rentals. But I do believe, um, I would like staff to bring back more information. So yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen.
For the record, I, I want to say no because I don't want to spend any time, uh, staff, uh, time for, for this anymore.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Ta.
No.
Motion carries three, two noes.
All right, so next we have comment from city council agency member, including A B one, two, three, four, when required. So who would like to go first?
All right. Uh, gonna be short and sweet. Uh, first of all, I'm happy to be back here and uh, happy for the city staff to renovate this and have, you know, in case you don't know, we have a little micro uh, speaker right here and I can hear it's uh, perfect. So, well, thank you very much for doing that. You know, I'd like to congratulate the Baker to Vegas uh, team. Uh, yeah, you know what, I, twenty-five years with the police department, I never had the ability to run. And those runner, I'm telling you, my hat off to you. Because you, if most, most of us do not know that race, this race around the clock, like in twenty hours, right? I mean, you guys, the, the winning team was at thirteen hours? Something like that, if I read the uh, the, the listing correctly. They run, uh, I mean, like continuously, it's just a relay. And it's just, they have different legs, it's hot, it's cold, it's midnight, it's your turn, you gotta run. So it's very challenging race and they got like two or a team or something competing in that event. I don't know what kind of prize they have, like money or just a trophy? The trophy?
They raise money for charity.
Okay, but the winning team, do they get anything?
Yes, the top five teams in each category get a mug.
Oh, my. For months of preparation, so my hat off to you, congratulations. I mean, you're a better man than me, like I could not do that, so thank you very much. And uh, once again, thank you to the city staff for, you know, renovate this place and uh, we can back, come back to normal, have a normal city council meeting. I can see you face to face. I cannot, you know, turn that off the screen and go have a glass of water. Uh, so um, thank you very much. Have a good night.
I'll be next.
All right.
Um, yes, I would like to also congratulate the team um, of Westminster Police Department. Um, our company, my company sponsored uh, sponsored you. And I just wanted to say that I was so privileged to be asked uh, this year. Um, so I do it every year if you ask, if you remember to ask. So um, secondly, I'd like to congratulate our Vanessa Johnson on your new position, so well deserved. I'm so, I'm happy that you were chosen. Um, and um, I was, I, I kept my fingers crossed. And um, then the other thing is I'd like to thank today, I really feel good about uh, our working relationship, uh, my working relationship with all of our council members. And I'd like to thank all of our um, council members for treating each other so kind, uh, so kindly today. And I feel, I, I think that if we could to please keep it up so that we can be exemplary to the people out there who are uh, come before us and, you know, it's okay for them to have um, you know, to be upset or to have an attitude, but then it's not okay for us to, so let's just keep it up. And I think uh, we will be getting uh, uh, out of here every, a meeting before midnight, I'm sure. And so I don't really have a whole lot to say except for I'm so glad to be back. Um, I feel like I'm really um, new here because I was like. I feel like I'm really new here because I was like forgetting where my seat was. And I do have a lot to thank staff for, just the attention to detail. When you, when you did this, the dais with the lamp, is I, you know, I, I need extra lighting. So, you know, with a push a button, I have extra lighting. And everything is just beautiful. So I, I know many of you involved in this, so I'd like to thank you as well. And that's it. Good to be back. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll go next. I want to say also congratulations to our PD for, for doing what you did. I, I, I can, I could not do that, I would have melted right away. And I, I, there's no way. So I'm really, really proud of you guys and, and, you know, that you guys sacrificed so much. I see that, what was the officer's name, the, the captain of the team?
Captain, yes, sir, the team captain, Mike Rodilla.
Yeah, I even seen him, he was limping a little bit when he was walking, so he's still paying the price for that. So.
He was limping, yes, sir.
Yeah, so I noticed that, so yeah, that's, that's pretty, pretty awesome. I also want to congratulate Vanessa. Excited for having you, I mean, you've already been doing it, so I'm just glad it's your official. I also want to thank staff for putting together, a mayor's birthday was April 9th, mayor. So we had a little bit of, they had a little cake back there for the mayor and for myself too, but my, my birthday was last month. But, so thank you for, staff for having that for the mayor and I. So happy birthday, mayor. And just thank you for, for, for all the hard work the staff is doing. It's not easy, you know, we're just short, short handed everywhere. Thankful to be back. This is actually really my, my real inauguration for me up here in the dais as a council member. Because it was one, that other one didn't really count, it was just like a 20 minute one. This is after, what is it, a year and a half later? So, yeah, it's, I mean, even though I've been up here, it just feels different. So, so thank you for all. And, and I think there's so much talk about, you know, our financial situation and, and a lot of, lot of the community, you know, it's always on their mind. You know, with our, with what we're facing. I just want to just say that, you know, that I'm for democracy, you know, a lot of people died defending it. So that's just my comment, just to be respectful to residents who, you know, want to hear from us. So, so yeah, so thank you for staff, thank you for public for joining us. That's it, thank you.
Hey guys, it's my turn. First of all, I want to apologize for my voice, you know, I lost my voice a couple of days ago. I thought I can't even speak today, but I hope that this not bother you that much, right? I want to thank you, I want to thank the chief. I, I want to congratulate the chief and the team, so I was Vanessa Johnson for your new position, I mean, I'm glad for you. Not only that, I want to thanks staff, I know that staff been working really hard, every one of you. You know, for the last year or so, especially for, you know, during the COVID. You know, we, we're proud of you, we would thank you for all the effort that you put in. I also want to thank people to come out and, and give the input today, regardless of what, what it is. But, you know, we have dialogues that we can, you know, share the ideas. And hopefully that we can work together, you know, to implement some of the, you know, good ideas. So that when we can move forward. So again, thank you very much for all that we have for tonight. Thank you.
All right, it's really, it's really good to have the meeting in person. Man, after two years, cannot believe it. But I think all the council member, we feel really, really, really motivated. I want to thanks all the staff or the police officer for working really hard for the last two years during the pandemic. And there was really red news happened like a couple of weeks ago at Coronet Park. That our city, we was a war, I think one one city for the whole nation in 2018. We was a war and recognized by Wild and Foundation for saving water. And I want to thanks all the city staff for helping us. Also want to thanks 9,500 resident in our city who make a blessed of saving water. I feel so honored and I believe all member city council, city staff, we feel so honored that we was awarded in 2018, but because the last two year was COVID. So that's why we didn't have opportunity to have the ceremony. But we had a really nice event at Coronet Park with all the city staff. Some member from the city council and some resident. It was a really nice event. And I believe that right now, our city staff been working with the Wild and Foundation to do the improvement for that park. So I think it going to take a few months. So we going to see that a new area. That's really beautiful, I believe. And I really proud of all the city staff for their dedication. So I think that first day coming back in person of us, I think that we can really be nice to each other and that one, the community, they really want to see, hey, we, we don't have to agree on any issue, but at least that we treat each other with respect. And that's what we need to show that to our community. So I want to thanks member from the committee who be here to voice your concerns, either you agree or disagree with the city council. But I mean, that is the democracy, that is America, and I appreciate that. So that is my comment for tonight. So, and our next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, April 27, 2022, at 7:00 PM. We adjourn. Good night, we end before midnight. Thank you.